Do you have any idea if Joseph's coming? I don't have their number yet.
I don't know.
The instrument's in facial here, too.
You remember?
Not a good sign.
It's cold.
Good evening. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting for October 16, 2019. It is 7:01 PM. I remind everybody this meeting is being audio video recorded per the opening meeting laws of the state of Massachusetts. Tonight we have a couple of public hearings. We have 194 Main Street, the residents of Norfolk Station. We have the Preservate Abbeville and Abbeville Commons, which will be continued until October 30th at 7 o'clock. So at this time I'd ask for a motion to approve the continuance of the Preservate Abbeville and Abbeville Commons to October 30th at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So at this time, what I'm going to do is turn over the reins to Mr. Kaliza, who is going to handle the 194 Main Street residents of Norfolk Station. I will be recusing myself from this part of the meeting, but will be returning after. Mike, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay. All right. Good evening. Al, who on your team will be presenting tonight?
Jamie Bissonnet from Zenith Consulting Engineers for the record. I believe at the last meeting we had given an overview of the project, but we had not had a review by Beta yet, peer review. We received the review this morning. We've had a chance to look through it. As far as the civil engineering design comments, I don't see anything that's overwhelming or something that we can't get through. We'd like to work over the next couple of weeks with Beta to try to make the adjustments, you know, as requested and work out those issues to get a completely favorable letter. Also submitted today was architectural plans stamped by the architect, kind of updated floor plans, adjusted elevations to account for the windows and porches on the floor plans that have been adjusted as well. And I think when we left last time, the question was about the parking ratio between the over 55 and the under 55, non-age restricted. And we go from age restricted having a 1.52 spaces per unit to a 1.83 spaces per unit for the non-age restricted because we're going from 72 units to 60 units.
Mr. Chairman? So you know a little bit of full-size [inaudible].
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, Michael Shaughnessy, the last time we were here, there's some discussion about removing the age restriction. The plans that we submitted today are revised architectural plans, and that shows a reduction from 72 units to 60 units. And what we've done is we've kind of broken it up. So in the new configuration, we have six three-bedroom units, almost 1,400 square feet in area. We have 18 two-bedroom units that range in size from 1,100 to almost 1,200 square feet in area. And then we have 36 one-bedroom units that, again, range in size from 827 to 927. So we've submitted those revised plans today. You folks haven't had a chance to look at it. The elevations are very similar to what you've seen before. The architect had to realign some of the windows and adjusted some of the dormers to match because he had to slide things around. But it did not affect the site plan at all. So the footprint you saw last time remains unchanged. So it doesn't affect Beta's review tonight.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you. Okay. So Jamie, Bill, did you want to make any comments about the civil piece of this?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Bill McGrath with Beta Group. We did complete our review letter. Todd Unzus from our offices here as well. Todd did most of the review. So I may ask him just to go through and hit on just some of the highlights, not go through every comment, but just a few of the highlights.
Todd Unzus from Beta. I think overall, the peer review letter indicates that the site design plans that we reviewed have some technical, some relatively minor technical issues that will, in all likelihood, be able to get ironed out, you know, in a probably a one-on-one setting. I can go through these if you like, or we can have the presentation and we can touch on things as they come up during the presentation.
Sure. That makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Jamie Bissonnet again. If the board would like, I'm more than happy to do another presentation of the site or if the, at the last meeting, if we've, if, we don't want to bore the board essentially. So we're happy to answer any questions. We'll do whatever the board wants us to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. We haven't made any site changes since the last hearing on it.
Okay. All right.
Chairman, maybe it makes sense just to briefly go through the letter really quick if the engineers can kind of discuss it. At the end of the day, I think it's going to be the engineers working together anyway.
Yeah. All right. Bill, if you want to highlight some of the more important points that you're going to be working out with Jamie or Todd?
I'll go through it and Todd can jump in as needed. So the main elements that we reviewed as part of the civil site stormwater are the site layout, parking, access. Well, we haven't reviewed landscaping yet. That'll be a separate review. Stormwater management, how the stormwater is mitigated, any increase in peak flow or volume off the site is mitigated back to existing conditions. So I don't know, Amy, if, do you want to just call up the plans so we can look at those as we're going through? So just a quick question, just on the existing conditions. There's a comment about no wetlands on-site. We just want to confirm that in addition to being on-site, there's no wetlands within 100 feet of any of the work on-site. And mostly that's driven by the existing outfall on the northeast side of the site or just above the site. Just want to confirm that there's no conservation, excuse me, conservation involvement because of some off-site wetlands as well. Maybe the next plan, Amy, the grading plan? Yeah. So, and again, as part of the stormwater management system, there's a couple of surface infiltration basins as well as a subsurface infiltration system. We've gone through the calculations. From what we can see, it looks like peak flows, volumes are mitigated, at least back to pre-existing conditions or pre-development conditions, rather. We do have a few concerns with the design of the basin number one in the upper right-hand corner, just in terms of making sure that all the grading can actually fit on the site and that it doesn't have to encroach on the town's parcel on either the north or the east sides. Also, just some concerns about the elevation relative to the foundation elevation, making sure that the foundations not being impacted by any of the water that tends to stand in the basin until it, excuse me, infiltrates into the ground. Few other technical issues to work through, I think, in terms of the design of the basins, whether all the work can be accomplished entirely on the site or if there's some encroachment on adjacent parcels. And again, the subsurface infiltration system on the left side of the plan, there's a water quality unit that's shown pretty much right up against the property line, whether that can actually be installed without encroaching on the adjacent property with the excavation. So there may need to be some adjustments there. I think those, basically the highlights on the grading. Maybe flip back the other way. Yeah. As far as the site layout, so there's three buildings essentially with garage parking underneath the buildings as well as some surface parking in the back of the buildings. I forget exactly what the parking count is, 112, 110. Spaces seem sized adequately. The aisle width seems adequate. We would suggest dimensioning the spaces in the garage and the aisles in the garage just to confirm that the circulation works. It looks like you were able to access from one building to the other within the garage area. I think one of the concerns we do have, and I think the fire chief has the same concerns, is access for emergency vehicles, not so much ambulances, but fire trucks to the back of the building. I know he has made some comments about stand pipes and I believe the building's required to have an internal sprinkler system. But again, we've asked for some more information on how emergency vehicles circulate through the site, just to make sure the chief is satisfied that he can get to whatever sides of the building he needs to, to be able to fight any fires. Just another, maybe flip to the landscape plan, Amy, if you would. This is just a suggestion, and I know these are preliminary plans, but the plans are showing some amenities, a dog walk park, a bocce court, pickleball, whatever that is. Just a suggestion, maybe to have some actual walking paths or sidewalk areas through there, particularly ADA accessible, so someone that's impaired or even slightly impaired can get back there a little bit easier. And also, as part of the overall site plan, the landscape plan kind of shows the footprint of the septic system because this, the site is, will be on septic. So we'd suggest that that information also be shown on the degrading and drainage plan, just to make sure that there's no conflicts between the storm drainage, the sanitary setbacks, the property lines, things like that. So I think that's something we'd like to see and then be able to review that a little bit further. Like I said, we are reviewing the landscaping. We'll do that in a separate letter for the board. But I think those are the main concerns, particularly emergency access and circulation to the back of the building, making sure that that works for the fire chief. I imagine you'll have to get a access permit from Mass DOT for modifications to the driveway as well as the sidewalk work that you're proposing on Main Street. And there may be some revisions that come out of that process with Mass DOT as well. So, Todd, if I missed anything that you want to add?
You got pretty much everything. I think the only other aspect would be utilities. Again, with the preliminary nature of these plans, you know, some of the utilities are shown, some, you know, some of the water lines, water services to the building. The fire chief in his memo has, had requested a hydrant be located near the maintenance building. So stuff like that should make it onto this plan during the course of additional design. Other than that, there's various site lighting shown on the site, perhaps showing the electrical location of the electrical feeds to those lights, just to verify whether or not any utility conflicts may or may not exist. Also, one of my comments dealt with the lighting plan that was provided with the set. And the lighting, it should be the last sheet. So it appears that the pedestrian walkway along the north side of the building may not be adequately lit. So they may want to maybe adjust some of the lighting locations or perhaps even the fixtures themselves to make sure that the pedestrian walkway is lit thoroughly.
Sorry. I think there's one other comment just regarding earthwork. It looks based on the proposed grading of the site and the existing topography that there'll be a certain amount of fill that has to be brought into the site to bring it up to grade. So I think it would be to the board's benefit to understand the volume of that fill that needs to be brought in. And again, correct me if I'm wrong, if the site's balanced or, but just looking at the contours, it looked like you probably have to import material.
We'll take a look. If this fill be brought in.
So the board can understand the magnitude of the truck traffic that might be associated with that as well. So I think that summarizes where we are with our comments.
Okay.
With the board's permission, we can work directly with the engineer, with Jamie, to work out some of these comments. So when we come back to the board, hopefully we've been able to resolve most of them and let the board know where we stand.
Okay. Good. I think that makes a lot of sense. So between now and our next meeting, you'll be able to get together?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Good. Dan, comments? Questions?
Sure. And this is my first meeting with this project, so I apologize in advance that I'm going to be missing some things maybe have been discussed in the past, but a couple of things stuck out of me and just kind of big, you know, sort of big issue-ish, big issue or, yeah, big issue items. The septic, I noticed that there really is no plan or any details on what's proposed and it looks like your leaching fields actually touch the building, which I thought there was a setback requirement under Title V.
There is, there's a 10-foot. And we adhere to the 10-foot setback from the leaching beds.
Okay. And I think, Dan, I think that's one of our comments as well as to show additional, more additional detail on the septic.
So it's our expectation to get fully [inaudible] Title V [inaudible] to Beta because it's part of their scope of review. So hopefully that's, next time we get together, that's all been addressed and resolved.
And I'm assuming you're asking for the waiver from the hydrogeological survey that's typically required under the Board of Health's regs?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have test pit information for all these subsurface infiltration areas for the septic and stormwater? Do we have, I noticed there was a comment that there was only one test pit, I think, for one drainage pond. Are you going to be doing additional test pits?
That, Beta has asked us to do that for the drainage. Septic-wise, yes. We've done, geez, we've done several, probably 12-plus test pits in the leaching field area with several perk tests with the Board of Health.
All right. So is groundwater an issue? Do you know where it?
Oh, yeah. No, no. We've already, we've already laid out the system and designed it. We've just got to finish putting it together in a presentable format for submittal. So.
Okay.
No, it's not.
Yes. From what we've seen of the test pits that have been done, groundwater, it doesn't seem to be an issue. It's more than four feet below the stormwater ponds, so.
Okay. I mean, one of those, actually both leaching areas, substantial part of them is located under the parking lot. It's not really ideal. Is that something that Norfolk has cared about in the past? Do we know? I mean, Title V seems, is a little bit ambiguous as to whether or not that's allowed.
Yeah. No, we've done this in Norfolk before. It's been permitted.
The Board of Health is okay with?
We, yeah, we've definitely have done it in several cases. I think proper venting is required, though.
Right. In the garage, I noticed there are these, can you pull up that garage plan, Amy? Yeah, it's not in the, it's in the civil plan set.
Can you have a garage preview?
Yeah.
So, yeah. One of these spaces here, I mean, that's just two floor, right? Does it?
That's correct. It's just, it's no parking. It's just an access way through.
Okay. And have you done any kind of turning template analysis here to see if the fire trucks can maneuver around that parking lot? Those corners seem a little tight.
We have, and we had met with the, with Chief Burnell and Bushnell, sorry, and gone over the site out here with him. But, but yes, I believe we owe a fire hydrant and some, I think on the architetchuals, he had some specifics he wanted as far as telecommunication boxes and things like that.
Okay. But you've done a sweat path analysis to show that?
No, 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 no. He said he would never pull the fire truck through the building.
It's not going to.
No.
So how is he going to get, if he comes in here, how's he going to?
He would back up and turn around. That's why we provided the T-turn around down the y.
He's going to back up all the way down here?
Yep.
That was his suggestion. If the building wasn't sprinkled, I think his comments would be a little bit different, but considering it was sprinkled.
It's not just for fires, it's also for, the issue is not whether, the issue is any, anytime the fire trucks go into this parking lot, whether it's for an alarm goes off or even for a medical emergency, you know, to have to back up all the way down is pretty unusual, just in my experience, but.
How long of a rope, how long of a stretch is this from this point to this point?
Yeah, that's what I was, about 300 feet.
Right. The fire code, I think, puts a cap on how long a dead-end fire lane can be. I don't know off the top of my head what that is, but do you know what I'm talking about? There's a?
Yeah, no, I'm not aware of it. I know state fire code, they want 20-foot accessible lanes, but I'm not sure of the code you're referencing.
Is Chief Bushnell, is he retiring or?
He's gone. He's retired.
He's gone now?
Yes. We have a new chief.
Who's the new chief?
Amy.
Is it an acting chief?
No, we have a new chief.
Kenny? Erin Kenny.
Erin?
He doesn't, he started December 1st.
Okay.
So an active chief, yeah.
Oh, so.
So I can make sure he's.
Yeah, I would, I would think that, I mean, it's my advice is that now that Chief Bushnell is not here, I think these questions should be raised with a new chief and, because they're the ones who are going to have to deal with this, not Chief Bushnell, obviously, so.
Excuse me, Dan, just, we've also asked for that information as part of our review.
Okay.
Not only to access the driveway as well as the drive parking lot, because the driveway is the only way in and out.
Right. Yeah, I would want to, yeah, I'd want to see the turning template analysis to make sure that you've got enough maneuverability there. Just, it looks tight to me, just from my light person experience, but is the garage going to be ventilated?
Yes, there's vents on both sides of the buildings.
Because is it mechanical ventilation or, where is the garage in relation? Is it underground completely or is it?
No, it's at the, that's the back parking lot, Dan. The garage is the same elevation.
So it's the same elevation? It's not, you're not digging into the earth at all? Okay. And so the ventilation will just be through the sides?
Yeah.
Okay. And was there a trash room in the basement? Where's your trash?
There's a dumpster in the back next to the old building.
Where is it?
On the right-hand side next to the old building. Right there. Yep.
What size dumpster is that?
I believe it's on our detail, but I believe it's a 12 by 12 concrete pad.
And where do residents, how is that going to be managed with the residents? This is a rental project. So how is that going to be handled? Is there a trash room where residents are going to put the trash during the week and then someone brings it out to the dumpster? Or is every resident going to carry their own trash to the dumpster?
I would think that they're going to carry their own trash to the dumpster.
Okay. Your density reduction, you went from 72 down to 60? What was there, what was the reason for that?
Mike asked us to do that.
Okay.
He asked us to make the age restriction go away. Once you make the age restrictions go away, the gallons per day increase per unit for the septic system, therefore you have less units.
Okay. So you're still below 10,000 gallons?
We're just under 10,000.
Okay.
Dan, after talking with the planning department and Rich and talking with other members of the board, they preferred to go the non-age restricted route rather than age restricted. We've got two age restricted on either side of this project. And as we looked at other transit-oriented projects in surrounding communities, they're all non-age restricted. So the consensus of the board and the planning department was, and the applicant, Al, thought that was a good idea as well, from an ability to rent these out, to go non-age restricted.
Mm-hmm.
And it reduces the number of units to, which is helpful.
Yeah. And a large number of one-bedrooms, that seems like a great program for the town, being able to appeal to younger folks and people starting out.
Yeah. And we also thought that just because you're 80 or 85 years old doesn't mean you can't live here. There are affordable units in these apartments for people that are on fixed income, so it serves a more diverse population, we thought. Made a lot of sense for the town.
Right. So before we started, we had a little sidebar conversation about peer review and where things stood. The scope of the peer review with Beta included a traffic review, but there's not a traffic study. So Michael Shaughnessy was asking whether we could dispense with a full-blown traffic study or maybe a hybrid. I suggested that, obviously, we need to talk about that, but, you know, I think you definitely want to have some kind of expert report from somebody on their team explaining issues such as site distances at the driveways, accessibility for pedestrians and bicycles since this is a more transit-oriented project, intersection control, intersection level of service issues. You are downtown, so you want to make sure this isn't going to create congestion. So I don't know what, if you guys thought about that or talked about what kind of traffic study to require?
We haven't talked about it yet. We normally do a full-blown traffic study and the request is not to do a full-blown traffic study.
Well, I'll, Mike.
Well, we'll respond. Will. When we originally presented this project to the board, we met with local municipal officials and I think the commentary was, well, we've studied this road nine ways to Sunday. So I think the information is out there. So I would prefer not to have to do a whole new study and reinvent the wheel again. And we're kind of hoping if there's some hybrid approach, kind of line along the lines of what Dan was saying, maybe we just, our guy can look at the work that has been done so far and say, based on this information, he can render an opinion instead of creating a new again. It, to me, that seems a little wasteful. So we're looking for some guidance from you folks.
Okay. Is that information from a previous project that Al had proposed on that site?
Well, I think that's part of it, but I believe there's numerous studies on that part of Main Street that we could take advantage of, instead of, you know, again, it's, there's a lot of money being spent here and we wanna use it wisely. And again, if the board's amenable to that, you know, we can pull all that information together and get a traffic engineer involved and look at it all and render an opinion based on that.
Rich, what are your thoughts on that? Do we have enough information from other projects that we can pull together?
I think we do. I think one of the things that was mentioned is to try to create more of a hybrid, so it's more focused on particular areas that relate to this project. There is data collected, but I think some of the things that Dan raised could be more focused towards the project. We have the Rockwood Road project. Boyd Crossing is there. Some of the other developments have done traffic studies in the surrounding area. So I think it should be more focused on this project as it relates to Norfolk Center, not just, it is more focused to look at specific issues, you know, so it is, there is data collected already and then you kind of home in on specific things, I think was raised. Makes more sense to do that.
Okay.
So it's not as if there's no study.
I'm not sure I understand, Rich, what you just said.
Okay. I think there's data, I think the point here is that there's a lot of data out there. I mean, there was data collected for two other 40B projects. This is Town Center. There's probably other data out there. Trip, accident data, there's probably trip counts, there's probably speed counts. We probably have all that data, but usually what you'd have is somebody pulling that all together and drawing conclusions. And really, the point of a traffic study for a project like this is to evaluate the impacts of a project on existing traffic patterns in the area. So that, that concerns me if we're not gonna get that, because I think typically we'd require it, especially for a project of this size. I mean, we required it for Rockwood and that was half the size, I think. So, you know, I...
I guess, you looked at me, you know, traffic is one of my biggest concerns with this project. In talking to people in Norfolk in general, they're starting to realize the impact of some of the decisions that we have made and the growth of this town. And as I said at the last meeting, we are somewhat unique in that we are the only town that in the crossroads of our town is a grade-level railroad crossing. Nothing's gonna change here, okay? State's not gonna put an overpass in or put a tunnel in. And so my concern is the impact that this is gonna have exiting and entering on Main Street to actually to Rockwood Road more than anything else. Since I live right around the corner, already I'm seeing, the other day I counted 32 cars going south on Rockwood Road from Boardman down to Main Street, sitting and waiting because the train crossing was active. And actually, I did two counts. I counted one of 32 and I counted one of 38 cars waiting. And that's, of course, without any current occupancy of 25 Rockwood Road, which has some, I don't know, 38 units that are going to exit and entrance onto, onto 115. So my concern is in the exiting and entering onto Main Street and how that will further exacerbate what is already a problem around both traffic islands that we have, both traffic circles, because you're starting to back up in all directions. So, not that, not that I want you to spend a lot of extra money, the applicant, but I'd like to be able to communicate to my neighbors and friends who live in Norfolk that, yes, we're confident that this project is not going to severely impact the downtown crossing area of the town, whatever data we need to secure to get that, okay? I think it's important.
Did you say you had Jeff Durk do some analysis for this, for a prior iteration or?
Yeah, for a prior iteration, he had evaluated the site distances. There wasn't an issue with site distances, but I didn't see any trip generation information on board. So, site distance is not an issue for the site that we built down there.
You gotta use the microphone.
Site distance isn't an issue for this property. I can't respond to the trip generation because I just don't know what it is. So, I mean, that's something we can look at quite easily.
Well, my suggestion is if Jeff's already started working on this, I mean, if he did some work on it already, it's not like you're starting from scratch with a traffic study. You could ask him to provide some bare elements of what we typically require, which is a site distance analysis, the site triangles. I mean, you're saying there's not an issue, but, you know, we need to see that, obviously, not just take the word for it. And it's really, and just so we're clear, this is all check-the-box stuff. We're not, no one's saying that we have issues on traffic. It's just that the board has a responsibility to review these substantive issues and make sure everything is kosher. And if there are issues, we'd raise them and get them addressed. But if Jeff's already started looking at it, I think there's an opportunity here to maybe bring him back on board, do the trip generation, because that's a fairly simple exercise, intersection level of service. That's probably where he might spend the most amount of his time. But, you know, you look at, you know, the rotaries, the rotary there and, you know, maybe a couple other intersections. And also, I think it would be helpful for the board to understand the connectivity to the train station. And how are people gonna be able to walk from this to the train station? I don't know if you've thought about that. I mean, I'm not that familiar with the downtown. I don't know if there's a trail or a path that goes behind, you know, along the tracks to the station or if you have to go down Main Street, cut over.
Dan, the, there's a front walkway, if you look at that view, and you walk straight up the sidewalk over the bridge and then the platform's right there.
Well, the platform's right behind each place?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
It's right on the other side of the bridge.
I thought it was further down, okay.
So, I mean, we feel like a substantial amount of these apartments are gonna be train people and not generate traffic. One of the reasons we reduced it from 72 to 60, you know, and took that suggestion was you wanted more people that would take the train into the city. You know, I think as far as the traffic at the rotaries, you had a project before you at 18 Union Street and I, I think the gentleman just did a traffic analysis recently.
We've got four 40Bs within spitting distance of this project that have been done in the past two years. That would be the enclave, 25 Rockwood Road, 106, 108 Main Street, and the condominiums, oh, that's, the condominiums are 10 years old, but the first three I mentioned are all within the past two years. So we've got four 40Bs that have done traffic studies and analysis. So I would think that information would be something that would be extremely relevant. Bill, you've been involved in all these too, haven't you?
Yeah, I was gonna say, what I might suggest is, what Dan talked about is doing trip generation, trip distribution, so you know how many cars are turning right and left in and out of the development, and then looking at the previous studies that have been done, which should show how much capacity is available at each one of the intersections. And then it's a relatively simple exercise. If there's 50-car capacity at level of service C available at the intersection and this project generates 25 cars, well, you're still gonna be at level of service C rather than doing a full-blown reanalysis of the intersections. And then if, if that indicates there's a problem, then maybe you have to take the next step and...
Okay.
Makes sense.
That makes sense to you, Dan, okay.
So, can you guys do that? Can you have Jeff or somebody like Jeff?
Yeah, that's not a problem, right? Yeah, yeah.
I've got Vin Scully that did a lot of work.
Not Vin, that's the, he's a sports podcaster.
Bill, is it Bill Scully?
Yeah.
Bill, okay.
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, I'm not suggesting that there shouldn't be any traffic review. I think those impacts are important. The point of making is that there has been a significant amount of study that done. There's data collected. There could be some analysis that needs to be done, and that's what we're talking about.
Okay.
Not just raw data collection. There might need to be some pedestrian data collected if it doesn't exist, but I think there's a lot to build on already that's already been done in the proximity of Norfolk Center.
Okay, makes sense. So is everyone comfortable with the next step is and how to get from where we are right now? Dan, do you wanna talk to Mike about that offline?
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like we're gonna get a response to Beta's letter, right? Are you gonna submit a letter? And in the past, other projects we've done, it's real useful if you can do it point by point. You know, so each paragraph responds, Beta, your response. You'll give us something, you'll give us a traffic memorandum. And I guess what I'm hearing is that the board is okay with not a full-blown traffic study, but maybe traffic study light, something that provides us the analysis, but doesn't provide, you know, there's a mass dot standard for traffic studies. I don't think the board is looking for that level, but it's looking for some basic analysis on, as Bill said, the capacity, trip generation directions, site distances and stuff like that.
Yeah, just a couple comments. I just wanted to say thank you to Beta. I thought that was a very thorough review. Touching up on a few comments from Beta. They had pointed out in their letter that easement that sits between the building and Main Street. And I think Beta's comment was just to show the inverts of those pipes. And I just wanna make sure that there's no conflict between the footing of that building and any potential, you know, future work down the road, that they can actually do work within that easement for any repairs or anything like that.
Sure.
Another comment is, if someone's walking down Main Street and, you know, let's say they need to go down to their car that's in the parking lot, have you thought about trying to put a sidewalk down to that parking area? I know there's, just by looking at the plan, there's, you know, a pinch point there right now adjacent from, you know, from the back of that curb to the building. You know, just wanna know if you guys could look at maybe something that could be done there to just provide that pedestrian access.
Where are you meaning there, on the map, Devin?
So it'd be on the left side of the sheet, coming, so if, essentially, how do you get to that back parking lot if you're walking along Main Street?
Got you, okay.
Right now, you'd probably have to...
I can answer that if you'd like.
Sure.
We, first, we don't expect to have anybody that's non-residents or guests of residence in the parking lot. The, we've actually created an access that goes from the sidewalk to the front of the building. So you'd be able to access right through the building to the backside or down into the garage if you parked underneath. And that was actually one of the, I think that might have been your comment when we had met about, on this about a year ago, was to include that access and to improve the sidewalk access at that point.
Okay, so the thought is someone from Main Street would enter just through that main part of the building?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. Another comment, I just think we should show the square footage of each roof drain going in each direction. It looks like there's two roof drains, one going to the subsurface system and one that looks like it's going to the detention pond system. Just wanna make sure that that's documented in future plans. Another comment, if, just with the question on the septic and everything, I'm just curious how that's, how that could potentially be vented, if that, you know, goes through the building, you know, so people don't smell it, or would that vent towards the back rear of the lot? Just something to look at once you guys get in the design of that.
Okay.
And then my last comment is with the introduction of Amazon, I think a lot of the apartment buildings in the city have the issue with packages arriving. And have you given some consideration on how deliveries of that sort might be managed on the property?
That'd be a great question for our architects who are not here tonight, but I'll note that and ask them.
Okay.
So I appreciate that.
That's a great point. I don't see actually any common areas. Is there a common mailroom or where would?
Yeah, I believe if you wanna scroll to the architecturals, I believe we do have, so, no, back up one if you would. So we do have some common areas with this, I meant. Well, in this area, but if you can go to the next sheet that you just, oh, perfect. In this area, this is common area in here. So the entrance coming in, doors there, some actual utility-style closets, staircases. And I believe that in here is actually where we planned on putting mailboxes in this vicinity over in here. We have the same type of situation over in here and we have that redundant, I think, per floor.
So this plan is actually different from the one I have in front?
Yeah, it got submitted today. I don't, do you have the newer updated plan?
Is this the new one or is this the new one?
Yeah, this is not the new one. This is part of the original submittal, no.
So on the one that is in front of us, there's a meeting room. So when you walk in the front door, and I just realized, so the front elevation is actually higher by 20 feet in the back, so it's like a walkout in the back.
It is.
So when you look at this from the street, you're looking at, the first floor is the units, right? Okay, so a visitor isn't coming in the front door. Typically, you'd see some kind of mailroom or common area for packages to be dropped off and stuff.
Yeah, we're expecting that to be the case. When they come up the stairs, it will, on the, on the front side, when they come in, they would walk in that entrance and we would have that over in here, I believe, was the anticipation.
It's marked as a meeting room, but that could be your?
Yeah, I think it's marked as a meeting room or office space, storage space, but it could be changed.
Yeah, we'll discuss the deliveries and packages with the architects.
While we're on that topic, Mike, if you don't mind, just in terms of loading area, that's another thing that I didn't really see any arrangements for. So it just goes to the point that more and more people, especially people who live here, are probably gonna not have cars. And so they're gonna be using more Ubers and, you know, Rideshares. There's gonna be a lot of deliveries. So I think you ought to think about where you would expect those temporary visitors to be parking, loading and stuff like that. I mean, there's not really, there's nowhere in the front to do it, so they have to come in the driveway and...
We, I think the way that it was gonna be game-planned, and correct me if I'm wrong, is I believe every, every unit was gonna be assigned a parking space. And then I believe the majority of them were gonna be, were going to be visitor or overflow for the residents.
So what we could do is, if we ran our provisions, we'll look at creating the space for Uber, Rideshare, Amazon, whatever the case may be. Maybe we have to lose a couple spots up back, but I don't think that's the worst thing in the world.
No.
Well, I think, yeah, it seems to me like you'd have a row of visitor parking spaces right against the building in the back. It might be kinda nice to have some kind of rear entrance. If you don't have a pedestrian entrance in the back, you just have a garage entrance, so... Do you know what I mean? Like, so if you have like a delivery truck, an UPS, they're gonna come in...
Can you scroll to the, to the basement elevation, which I think would be, yeah, I think it's actually the other way, if you would. I think it might be A1, yeah, please. Yeah, so I believe that the entrance that they originally had is right down in those same areas to come in and then you'd walk across to the set of stairs opposite of you and...
Oh, there's a door back there?
There is. And then, can you go to the profile, which is probably five or six? It's pretty far down.
This area here is a stairwell. The opposite side's an elevator.
That one right there. Can you go to the next one, I think? Yeah, there we go. And then you can see to the left-hand side, that's the entrance?
I see.
On the lower level in the back?
And again, same thing with moving trucks. I mean, because it's a rental property, you're gonna have probably one or two units trend, what's the word? Not transitioning, but turnover-ing, yeah. You know, probably once or twice a month.
Yeah, a moving truck, deliveries, things like that, yeah. I get it, like a temporary parking space, no more than a half hour or something.
So that, that was gonna be my question, is you said earlier that the cars per unit was 1.82, I believe, correct?
1.83, yep.
Close enough. And so that's approximately 109, 110 spaces. So, and I know you have 60 underneath. And by the way, how wide are the spaces underneath?
The, we, we have the same question for the architect. We're gonna ask him to add that to the plan.
Okay.
I think the nine by 19.
Nine wide?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I don't know what-
They meet your parking space.
They do?
Yeah. We didn't ask for a waiver.
Okay, all right. So, so basically, you have right now approximately 110 spaces for residents. How many, I didn't, because I didn't have the plans with all of the parking, how many extra spaces are out there for visitors?
Well, your zoning requires 1.5 spaces per unit, and I guess it's a lot-
It gives us about 20 extra.
Okay, and that's in the plans?
Yes, it is.
But the 1.5 calculation factors in visitors.
Yeah, that's the requirement, is the 1.5 total, yes.
So it's not 20 more for visitors, 1.5 has that factor of visitors.
Yeah, yeah, we have, we have 20 more than the 1.5.
Got you, okay. And then, another question is, each, each building's 120 feet, right? It's symmetrical, am I correct? Each of the three, when I say buildings, of the three wings, but the two wings in the center section?
That sounds right.
Yeah, it's really one building, but you can follow three.
Do you have any, factored in for any space for snow storage?
That was actually, that's actually one of the questions that Beta had raised, and Jamie's going to address it on the next, next revision.
Okay, all right. You talked about the visitor spaces, okay, at the one point, supporting the 1.5. If you're going to have 10 three-bedrooms and 18 two-bedrooms.
I believe it's six, three-
Six, I'm sorry, six three-bedrooms and 18 two-bedrooms, right? So what is the estimated number of kids? Like, it, there must be something out there, if it's a three-bedroom, it's going to have maybe two kids, and if it's a two-bedroom, it's going to have one kid. I, I don't know, but what's the estimated number based on?
You've got me. I, I don't know. I've never been asked that.
My question is, let's just say you have 30 kids, come up with a number, and I could, is, is there any possibility at the end of the building to have a little children's area with a swing set or some type of children's area? When I say the end, as we're looking at it, there seems to be a green area on the right, Al. I don't know what, what that is down there?
Yeah, that, that's drainage.
That makes a lot of sense. I think the amenities were based on the over 55, and we didn't look at that, so.
There is a, a swing set right down the road on, uh-
Our best playground in town is right around the corner from that building.
No, I understand that, but, you know, if, if that's something, I, I just, I saw that green area all the way down to the right, I assume that's part of-
Maybe we got to get rid of that pickle court, huh? Whoever that is.
The green areas to walk their dogs.
Is that what it is? All right, and the other thing is, will we see where sidewalks are in the next plans?
Yes.
Okay.
Sidewalks within the site, or?
Within the site.
Aren't they on there? I think they're on.
We're talking about walkways to the amenities?
Walkways to amenities-
Oh, in the back.
General walkways, just any, you know, we-
Yeah, absolutely.
Can you explain what the drainage easement is in the front? Who's, who is that, who is that for? What's it serving?
That's the town Norfolk's drainage easement for Main Street. So there's a Main Street drainage line that, yeah.
I'd like to add an unmaintained drainage easement.
It's a little overgrown. So there's a drain line, there's a drain line in Main Street with catch basins up, further up Main Street, from 201 Main Street, that runs down Main Street and then comes across through this easement, and then ties into another drain line that goes down along the railroad right away, and that connects into Rockwood Road. And then, it's part of the overall drainage system for Norfolk Town Center. And so it's a, it's an easement to the town for the town center drainage.
Is it a subsurface pipe?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
It's, I can't remember the diameter of the pipe at the moment, but it's a pipe.
There's a NASB built on it.
Between 15 and 18 inches.
Yeah, between 15 and 18 inches.
Is there a reason why you're not putting anything in the front yard? And why, you're not showing any parking or?
That's what easements-
I know, but you can't go on it, are you?
We thought it would just look better, you know, without parking on it, you know, hide all the parking to the rear, use what we can for landscaping in the front.
I mean, just, there's an opportunity there to put a loading area or a couple visitor spots, I mean, just, not suggesting you do it, I'm just asking why you didn't do it. If you-
I'd probably like to see them work that to the back of it, actually. I mean, we're trying to, overall Norfolk Center, we're trying to have parking to the rear and side, and so, and not loading in the front either?
I agree.
I agree with that.
Yeah, me too.
That's all that comes to mind right now. I'm sure I'll have more later.
Questions from other members of the board, or? Don't hear any, and?
I, I, I just, I, I would just ask that, look into, and I, you said that nine feet is our normal parking regulation, but in an enclosed or underground building, to make sure that based on where the pillars are, et cetera, that there's not a situation where, you know, in fact, people can't get into a parking spot because it is underground. I understand nine feet when you're, you know, out at Stop &amp; Shop, but, so I would appreciate if Beta looks into that, or you guys can just explain that and make us feel comfortable.
Mike, just on the trash, while I'm thinking of it, this is not really, I mean, this is kind of stretching the limits of a zoning board's jurisdiction or, or level of interest. But in, in projects that I'm working on in more urban areas, I, we, we almost always see, you know, a trash room on, in the garage level and, and having chutes bringing trash, so residents don't have to go outside and, and bring their bags out there, especially in the cold weather. It's probably more of an amenity to you guys than it is anything else, but it, it also, again, prevents it, keeps a dumpster from having to be put in the site. And you might lose a couple parking spaces, but you could probably recreate them somewhere else, and you could also compact your trash, and it just-
We'll ask the architect to look at it, it's, it's his design, that's one of the issues that you folks brought up. Sorry, off the mic, but.
The only thing with that is now you're introducing trash in the building, but now you're dealing with, I would think, smells and-
Well, I have seen actually where it's really to the exterior of the building, the chute is there, it goes down, and actually it goes into bins that are outside the building, but they're in containment areas, done as well. There's a way to take it.
There is. The reason for us putting it in the far back is we, these units have porches, they have the ability to have windows open, so we're trying to get it, you know, away from the residents, so in the hot, in the hot summer days, they're not smelling it. That was kind of the thought process, I'm putting it back there.
I have firsthand experience with stinky dumpsters. My son's college dorm is right next to the dumpster, which is 10 feet away, and it is poor. Further away, the better.
I agree.
You'd agree. Okay, there are no other comments at this point from the board. I'll open it up to folks in the audience, questions, comments.
Martha Henry Boardman, 30 Boardman Street. I just wanted, actually, it's a question for the board about changing the age restriction in terms of the impact on our schools. We already need to add an addition to Freeman Kennedy without any of the new buildings coming in. And I was just curious about how the tax base works on a rental unit that would feed into that school system to be able to pay for all the, I would imagine, eventually, another school or much larger, HOD is totally built out. And then, to your point, Mr. Hanson, will there be a bus stop? Will there be a safety sort of piece around where children would get on and off a bus on such a busy road? So it's really a question for the board in terms of, this started out as a 55 and older. I feel like sometimes we present 55 and older as if they're elderly people, and that's me in 10 years. I got to work for probably another 30 years. So we're, so 55 and older is, is not this old group of people who aren't going to work or go into the city. So I'm just trying to understand the decision for that based on so many of these discussions are around our school system and the, what these additional developments are doing in terms of that population of the schools. So I'd like some clarification on how Mr. Cragleary has been working on this project for years. He comes to the first meeting and you've made a different decision. So I'd like to understand that as it relates to all your new zoning, B1 zoning stuff that's coming out for the Fall Town meeting. Thank you.
You going to handle it, Mike?
Rich, you want to try to address that?
Sure. The, I've been in contact with the New England School Development Council, and they're working with the Norfolk Public Schools on doing some school projections coming out. The updated projections as they're looking at the facilities and whether it needs to be, what needs to be addressed. So some of the points from the conversation that I had with Dr. Kennedy was that when they do school projections, factors that they consider is the number of bedrooms. And that's for all housing types, whether it's rental or a single-family. And there's a, there is a, a higher school age that can come out of single-family homes as just as well as other unit.
So that's one of the things they give consideration to.
Existing homes within the existing housing market that people age out of and they move, and whether they move to a 55 and over or they move out of the community is another component of housing, or school-aged children growth within the community. That's new, not new starts, it's existing. Then, as relates to new starts, a few things for new construction, there can potentially be a lag period, and this is more related to single-family homes. But oftentimes, when someone goes into a new home, they will have children, but they're not school-aged, there's a lag period associated with that. They don't necessarily go right to the school system right away. And then, projection of school-aged children kind of focuses around the proximity of where the housing is located. You know, are there public amenities nearby? Is it kid-friendly? Is there recreational opportunities? Is it not a busy street? And so those are kind of the, the same kind of locational factors that people make with the single-family homes, kind of plays a part in rental. And in rental home, or rental units, the numbers, and we can, we can get some other numbers to kind of show you that. But typically, don't generate school-aged children as one would think. They, it's not to say they don't generate, but the numbers that come out of rental versus ownership can vary. And quite honestly, it makes sense when you apply it in your own situation where oftentimes, when it comes to child age, schoolchildren, and particularly in more low-density suburban, rural, semi-rural communities, usually going to have children when you're in a home, not necessarily rental. So bearing that in mind, yes, this is a, you know, change from a 55 and over, but there could be a lag result in 55 and over by people aging out and moving into them, and then somebody replacing them in a four- or five-bedroom house. So that's kind of a latent effect when it comes to school-aged children. People oftentimes maybe don't see it at front because it's delayed. The concept of going to non-age-restricted is to provide opportunities for, so it can be age-restricted people that are across the spectrum, but then it also provides opportunity for people who haven't reached that 55 and over. There are, there are many situations where, you know, young people would like to, and I say young in the sense of mid, early 30s that want to have a rental opportunity within the community that they grew up in, but yet they don't have that opportunity, and for a variety of different reasons, not ready to get into the housing market. So it provides those housing opportunities. And we have, at least locally, at least next door, we, we know of a situation where there are relations and connections in Norfolk where people are renting next door, and they are younger. So it provides that opportunity. There are all situations where family situations change, people get divorced, a parent might want to live closer to their kids, they might not be 55 and over, they might be. So there's a whole variety of different things, so.
There is, again, there are impacts necessarily, but just be mindful that rental doesn't necessarily-
All right, hopefully. So, in light of that, the discussion was to provide housing choices across spectrum and ages, and that was the direction to try to provide that in Norfolk Center. Because I think one of the things that hopefully, it's not B1-related, but hopefully is to have a mix of people of different age groups that will support local businesses and hopefully grow local businesses within town center.
Did we answer your question?
We have more?
Yeah.
I, I-
In a roundabout way, I guess. There was a lot of data about speculation, about who's moving where and doing what, without the response of how are we going to pay for it? Because I've already paid for a 2.5% override since I've moved here. We've already got to add to Freeman Kennedy. I'm just asking how that, that specific piece factors in, how does it get paid for? When you have no idea how, who's going to move in, three-bedroom apartments typically bring children. Those are the, Christopher and I own a rental property, and it has three bedrooms, and the people who apply, more than 75% have children. So I'm just trying to figure out the future planning for Norfolk around that, and I'm trying to connect it to the switch in decision-making and what that data looks like.
If I, I can just comment on the second part, the switch in the decision?
Yeah.
Because as a member of that select community of 55 and older, and a strong advocate of 55 and older age-restricted housing, and the fact that it has a positive impact in terms of taxes to the town, all right? I also came to realize as we were going through this and looking at the master plan, that turning it into just a rental for everyone and reducing the number of units provides still an opportunity for those 55 and older. And there's a lot of people who comment about how they'd like to have a place in Norfolk and also maybe live, live someplace else, and they don't want to own two homes, and boy, if they could rent someplace. There's a comment right on the board here, I want to point, point over here to my colleague who said, one day he said, boy, you know, if I could find a rental place like this, I'd move in. And he commutes to, what did he commute to, Boston?
Yeah, just for the record, I have no intention, no offense, Al. No offense, Al, I have absolutely no intention of moving in. And that, that had no effect on my personal decision.
Thanks, Don.
But, but, but my point is that we-
Older demographic for the most part, of the people that are looking to do that split location, that's primarily going to be an older demographic. In other words, there aren't, in other words, there aren't a lot of 30-year-old people that are looking to rent here in Norfolk and a place in Boca.
Oh, I, I would agree.
Yeah.
I would agree. But I believe that there are a lot of younger people as they get priced out, and if you take a look at the developments in Walpole, there's a lot of single units, okay? One-bedroom units that are rental. And the justification of all of that was the fact that there's a lot of people who work in Boston and need to have an- work in Boston and need to have an affordable place to live.
I have no doubt he'll be able to rent them, no doubt.
So that was, I guess, the reason, just to go back to, we started talking about what is the disadvantage of having it be not age-restricted? And the advantage was, seemed to be that we have less density, we still have, we offer a rental opportunity to seniors, and we open it up to other types of people who commute from Boston. And the master plan really puts in place putting apartments down in that area.
Exactly.
That's what we asked for.
So Chris Henry, 30, board member, directly to that point, Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, but the whole intent of this B1 study that has been going on has been, the intent was to increase density in the downtown. Wasn't that the goal?
Wasn't that the goal?
It is to increase density. So, so that seems just a bit opposed that we're now encouraging them to decrease the density. So just in that point, just so I can understand, how many bedrooms were proposed in the 55 Not the number of units, how many bedrooms?
What's the, what's the difference between now and then?
I would think we'd have to have that data somewhere, right? How many?
Is it more or less?
Is it more or less? Has it increased the number of bedrooms or decreased?
I think it increased it slightly.
Okay. So it's just, so it's just slightly misleading when the number of units has gone down, but the number of bedrooms has, has gone up. So I just, you know...
Mass housing requires 10% of the total of units to be three bedrooms.
Understood.
Yeah.
It's a requirement. No, I, I get it. I, I just, that's why I questioned why that steered in that direction. But, so I, are you asking for a buffer from the 50-foot setback from the residents to 30 feet?
We've requested a waiver from that 50-foot, but as we talked about last time, I don't know specifically what the distance is.
I think it's from 50 to 30, but my...
Something like that.
Okay, so my, my point would be that to then take the dumpster that everybody agrees is offensive and push that directly up against that abutter who you've now encroached upon seems unfair. Maybe you look to find somewhere else to put the smelly dumpster. I realize it's the residents that we're trying to protect from that odor. My argument would be that it's their odor and not necessarily should be pushed to the residents that you're asking for a waiver for the, for the buffer. So I, I guess my questions are, is there another location for the dumpster? What is the difference in the number of bedrooms from before to present? I guess, I guess that's it. I just, I, I feel like this was a missed opportunity for the, to the benefit of the town of Norfolk, where we had a developer who brought forth a really attractive project that offered, I mean, I hear the argument that Mr. Kaliza made to, that there are two developments, 40B developments, that, that are right in the downtown, that are age-restricted. But those are both purchases. Those are both 600-plus thousand-dollar homes. That's a demographic that not every member of Norfolk is going to fall into when it comes time to downsize. And I hear the argument of they're not excluded from this project, but that will be the result in the end, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I get an answer to the number?
I don't know if it now. I have to look at this.
I know we're at 90 now.
We're at 90.
We're at 90 by now.
Right. And I just came up with one away from four.
And I couldn't beat it.
No, it could.
A 150.
And one ten on one bedroom.
So it's 36 twos and 36 ones.
Right. That's what it was. It's 108. So it got reduced. 108 bedrooms to nine bedrooms.
It was reduced, I believe, Mike, we'll have to verify it, but it was 108 bedrooms on the over 55, and now it's 90.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from, yes, sir? Please identify your name and address.
My name is Ron Ober. I'm on Main Street in Norfolk, obviously. I'd like to revisit if I could with you, if you don't mind, the issue of traffic. Okay. We've gone down this road before with another development, but what I'd kind of like to know, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The, what's the duration of the construction of this project?
18 to 24 months.
18 to 24 months, okay. Okay, that answers one question. The other question is in terms of bringing in fill and gravel, okay? Transporting it over the road to your site. How, I'm sure you probably haven't calculated, I had time to calculate, truckloads and cubic yards and all of that stuff. But do you have any estimate of truckloads?
That came up earlier on. We don't have that information in hand.
We don't have that information in hand. We'll look at it between now and our next meeting and...
Be great.
I, I thought it was a balanced site, but I could be wrong. Where, where we weren't bringing in any material. So we'll take a look and let the board know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions?
I did have a question about the proposed rents for one-bedroom, two-bedrooms, and three-bedrooms for the project? What they, what the proposed rents could be?
The market rents or the affordable rents? We've been going back and forth with that, comparing it to other projects. I don't have that information right now. I'd have to get back to you on that.
That's going to dictate whether people come there with children and how much they can afford, because there will be a difference of paying rent versus paying a mortgage. So I own property and that's usually what they do. They factor in what they're paying and what they could be paying if they own something. Three bedrooms, I do agree that a lot of people from my apartments with three bedrooms, they do come with children, but they also want to see how much space they have for them to play and what resources are there for them there. The two bedrooms are approximately, in my experience, 50/50 between people coming in with one or two children or even coming in with no children. And the one bedrooms are always people without children. I do, I just, because I'm relatively new to town, would like to, I'm just curious, do we have any elderly housing that are rentals in town? And are, where are they besides the one on Rockwood Road? Do we have any elderly housing in town rental?
There's only one. Okay.
Hillcrest.
Okay, so Hillcrest, there, I don't know if there's a lot of demand for elderly housing. I would assume there is if they don't want to downsize to, you know, a house like at Boyd and's Crossing for 650-plus. But I do have someone, a nice young woman who does, you know, babysit for me, and she told me that there are younger families living over there too. So that's, I mean, but maybe there could be in the future a rental opportunity for elderly people in town. Maybe that would be good, idea at some point, so.
Okay. So at the next meeting, we're going to be looking at traffic. Will we be ready to do traffic next time? And architecture? Going to be ready for architecture? Okay. So I think of, anything else that you can think of, Dan? Traffic, architecture?
Well, I have a list of action items that I've been taking as we've been going along.
Why don't you go through that?
So I think, and then I think we should ask the applicant how, how much time they need to respond to these things, so we have enough time for then Beta to review that and have a proactive next meeting. So you're going to provide a comprehensive response to Beta's letter? Two weeks? One week?
Tomorrow morning.
Two weeks. Septic design and details, sounds like you've already done that, so that's a matter of packaging it and submitting that to us. You're going to take a look at the loading area question that, that's been raised, including visitor parking, moving trucks. So thinking about how that's going to be organized on the site. You're going to provide a traffic memo, and we talked about not doing a full, full-fledged traffic study that is typically required, but maybe something a little bit lighter than that that provides the bare analysis. And then if we ask, if we, if we need more information, we can ask for more information after that meeting. And Bill, we have a, part of your scope was traffic review, so there's a traffic engineer that can review this?
Yeah.
Okay. How much time would you need on the traffic memo?
I, I'm not sure we'd have that turned around in two weeks. I'm guessing we may not have that for the next meeting. I'd like to say we would, but I don't know the answer to that.
When were you, when were you thinking of meeting next, Mike?
The 6th of November.
That's coming up fast.
Is that too soon? I thought we were going to move that back.
Well, I, I think it makes sense to keep going and knock out as many issues as we can. I mean, if we can knock out the site stuff for the next, next hearing, I think in, in the septic, I think that's the yeoman's part of the work here.
Amy, is that what you have in the book for us for November 6?
Uh, yes.
But that's, what, three weeks? That's three weeks, right?
Yes.
Yeah. It's not a heck of a lot of time. If you're going to be providing us with septic design, responses to Beta, perhaps some plan changes, we're going to want Beta to review those and they're going to need some time to review them.
Okay.
And then you'd want to, I'm assuming you guys would want to see the stuff more than the morning before the meeting.
We can always continue it if we're not ready, but...
You, you can, I just, I don't think it's, makes a lot of sense to...
I mean, if Beta needed more time, I think we could work something out if we had to continue it. And I get that they're going to need time to look at it. They're pretty fast.
Yeah.
Does it, is it important to you that we have a meeting? Because if it's...
Well, I just don't want to sign any more extension. I thought I was that.
No. Why can't we do the 20th?
Just trying to move it forward.
Yeah, I don't know if we...
If there's reasons why we can't move it forward, then those, those should be obvious.
But I don't think, I don't think the board's asking for an extension of the 108-day...
No, we're just bumping into, the 27th is the day before a holiday. The 20th is the day after special town meeting, right? And it may bump over to another night, town meeting, so we, we're reluctant to schedule on the 20th because town meetings are the 19th. And then the 13th is, what's going on?
Well, you could do, but I have a ConCon meeting in here.
We have a ConCon, okay, we'd have to find another room. ConCon is scheduled for here. So we could do the 13th?
Yeah, I'd like to, like I said, I think we can knock out a lot and if the traffic had to follow up on a subsequent meeting, I mean...
The traffic definitely wouldn't happen by the 6.
Yeah.
So I, I'm just concerned about having anything done by the 6, but...
Well, we're talking about the 13th now, so...
One other thing that we are, we're doing is the landscape line.
You don't want to go to December 4.
Yeah, it typically comes towards the end, I mean, after things kind of shake out.
We moved the Abbeyville.
You just did, yeah.
The only other choice is December 4. We don't have someone to run the screen and all that. Amy is at the ConCon meeting that night, so...
Oh, you won't have a screen either, actually.
Yeah. We won't have a screen that night.
And the 20th is out?
You could downstairs, I take that back.
Downstairs, we could.
Well, there's a TV down there.
Do we know if Betsy's available?
I don't know.
We don't know that. All right, can we, can we tentatively say the 13th? And then we'll find out tomorrow if, if Amy's, Amy's not available, if Betsy's available. Okay, and if the 13th doesn't work, then I think the only other date, as soon as we can do, would be December 4.
I'd like to stick with the 6.
All right, if, all right. If you want, if you guys think you can get it done and give us enough time to review it, I mean, one day is not enough. You know, we, we need three or four days to look over everything. So if you want to stick with the 6, we will.
And Bill needs, what, a week? I mean, you need some time to digest stuff and...
Yeah, I would say at least a, a week would give us time to look at and review.
Is that going to be too tight for you, Bill? Is that going to be too, is the 6 going to be too tight?
Well, my only concern is, you know, if, if we have a week to review it, we'd like to get it to the board at least a few days before the meeting, so the board has time to look at our letter as well. Certainly would be tight.
All right, Al, let's try the 13th.
I've been waiting in line for about 10 months, so I don't want to lose the momentum, Mike.
It's not, we're not, we're not trying to delay it, we're just trying to, we, we want you guys to have enough time to do all the stuff that we've asked you to do. That's...
I want to whip my guys into shape here and get it done.
All right.
Is it possible, is it possible to meet on another night other than a Wednesday night? Maybe Thursday, the 14th?
All right, why don't we do this? Why don't we stick with the 6? And if, if Beta doesn't have enough time to review it, we don't get it in time, we may have to do a continuance. Al, we'll stick with, we'll stick with the 6.
Yes.
And if Beta is jammed and they can't review it, they can't get it to us, then we're going to come back and say, we've got to push this off to the 13th.
Can't get, you mean the response, our response?
Yes.
Gotcha.
So if I could go back to my list, I, I actually hadn't finished and I, I interrupted myself, but, all right, so we talked about a, a response to the, response to the Beta letter, subject of design and details, loading area, temporary vehicle issues, address that on a, on a plan or, or a narrative, a traffic memo, as we talked about, as Bill mentioned. I would recommend that you get some kind of report on the fire lane issues that we've raised. I think, I, I'm just, I, I, this strikes me as, as not great in terms of the design for fire truck access. And so I, I think you ought to just take a look at the fire code and see what's required for the turnaround for that, that length of a road. And I would, I think we ought to get confirmation that the town's largest fire trucks can make, can maneuver around all the turning areas within the site.
And why don't you check with the acting chief on that?
While you're at it, I think you ought to address what, how would you fight a fire in the garage? If the fire truck's not going to come into the garage, is there, is there a stand pipe? But how, what happens when there's a car fire in the garage? Is that...
The garage is sprinkled.
Right, there'll be stand pipes, whether it's dry or wet system.
All right. And then in terms of mailroom package delivery, I guess that kind of goes in the, in the category of vehicle trip, I mean, of loading areas and stuff. And ju, just a personal observation, I, I'm working on a project in Wayland right now where we're, we're approving a big 200-unit project for, that, that Wood Partners is building. And, you know, they, they're telling us on their current projects that the, the mailrooms that they originally designed for their projects are so small because, again, all these new packages and everything comes in. And, and I think you ought to think about the amount of space you need for that kind of, for 60 units, I think you're going to need more than what you've shown there. But again, maybe that, that's an architect question, but think about whether or not you have enough room for...
Drone deliveries to the roof?
There you go. So that's my list. Did I miss anything, or?
I think you got it, everything, Dan. Snow also was on there.
Snow, snow storage? I got that.
Beta picked that up in the letter. Okay, Chris?
I just had one more question about the roof drains. So the roof drains, are all the mechanicals on the roof drains? Are there any sort of interceptors that will be on these if they're discharging right into the, the retention pond?
No, I think that's a direct discharge. The roof drains to the, drain, no treatment on that. No.
Roof is, roof...
Blood force from Zenith Consulting Engineers. Roof runoff per DEP Stormwater Management Standards is considered clean, so there's no...
Even with the mechanicals?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, just to clarify on that, it's actually, I can't remember the exact language off the top of my head. There's, there's some cases where it's, it's actually not considered clean. I think it's more geared towards warehouse buildings. Like I said, I, I can't remember off the top of my head.
Metal roofing as well.
Certain, certain roofing materials that are not considered clean.
Yes. Thank you. I didn't see a roof plan, actually. Did, was there a plan sheet for the roof?
Yeah, I'm not sure if there's actually like a material or...
Well, you're going to put your mechanicals up there, right?
Yeah.
So there should be a, you should have a, a floor plan for the roof that shows...
Well, there's no question that we'll have to have one. I, I just, if you want to keep scrolling, can you go down a couple more? Because it would be...
There it is. It wasn't in my packet, okay.
Back. I, I just, if you want to keep scrolling, can you go down a couple more? Because it would be...
There it is. It wasn't in my packet, okay.
Back, one more, please.
This is, this was the original, is it?
Yeah, yeah, but the roof, I think, is going to be very similar. If you can go back up to either A5 or A4, I think. Up, right there. Up, A5, there we go.
But that doesn't show your mechanicals, so...
Yeah.
You should, if you can provide a revised roof plan for, for next time. And did you, did you describe somewhere where, how you're going to heat the building? Is this gas or...
Heating post.
Okay. Electric?
Yes.
Oh, great. That's, that's really impressive. Good.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for the residences at Norfolk Station until November 6th at 7:00 PM.
I see.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On fever?
All right.
So, that's, we'll stick with the 6th and if we're crunched, if beta's crunched...
We'll be ready.
Okay. We'll keep it going.
They can do it.
They can do it. You're welcome, good night, thank you, gentlemen.
So that will be this?
Is this how we're going to go on like...
He's going to withdraw without prejudice.
Yes. No, he doesn't have to.
Can I get my $300 back?
Come back later. See you, Mike.
Al, maybe 10 years later? Thank you, Dan.
Well, thank you.
Rich, thank you, appreciate your help tonight.
He'll still be here.
Are you going to stick around?
Yeah. Well, it's just kind of a mental cue, that's all.
Did everybody else have a copy?
Rich, do you want a copy? Listen, you have, you've got this latest copy, don't you? If you don't, take that.
Okay.
I think that's done, is that yours?
Yes, it's mine. Okay. It's now 8:35, we'll take care of a little housekeeping before we have our town planner address the board. Sixth Hill Street Appeal, the applicant has asked us to withdraw the Sixth Hill Street Appeal without prejudice, so could I have a motion to withdraw that Sixth Street Appeal without prejudice?
I so move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just curious, why is he asked him to withdraw it?
That has gone to the planning board for site plan review.
That's been there for quite a while, hasn't it?
Yeah, it has been there for a while, and when he initially filed this appeal, it had not go for site plan approved, it was, there was approved F-11. So, since it's now gone for site plan approval, the F-11 that was initially issued has been retracted and it's gone to the planning board.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great. That's taken care of. All right. At this time, for the audience, I do want to welcome Tim Martin to the board, he's our newest associate member. He lives on Turner Street. He's an attorney and he works for the Rockland Bank at this time.
Rockland Credit Union?
Rockland Credit Union, a little plug, right?
That's right.
Anything you want to add, Tim, or?
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to working with the board, there's a lot of, a lot of issues going on and just as important, I want to work with the town, so thank you very much for this opportunity.
Great, great. All right. At this time, we're going to recognize the town planner, Rich McCarthy, who's going to address the board with the B1 zoning district changes that are going to be proposed at town meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, the floor is yours, Rich.
Well, thank you. First, I'd like to thank Devin for his participation in the B1 committee work as the zoning board of appeals representative. As the committee in earnest started back in February, we've gone through several, we've had a couple of community meetings, workshop meetings, as well as meetings with the planning board. The, after the September 12th community meeting that was held at the Freeman Kennedy School, the draft language was produced with the various recommendations for changes to the B1 zone. And through the process, what the committee had worked on and then the planning board essentially, really working with the framework of the existing bylaw and making some substantive changes to affect some change, but not a wholesale move and replace as related to the existing B1 zoning. And since the airing of the first draft, there was a discussion on, on September 23rd, the draft language was produced in concert with the planning board. And then at the planning board meeting last week, which was September 10th, or, I forget what day it was, I'm not September, October, I forget what day the week was.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Whatever it was, last Tuesday, the date, we went through some additional thoughts relative to the zoning and it was really based on feedback that I had received, committee had received, planning board comments relative to the zoning, as well as the public at large. They had, had responded to some of the things that were being proposed. So, what you have before you, behold, the planning board's going to hold a public hearing on October 28th. And one thing that decided to bring back was amending the parking requirement per dwelling unit at 1. The existing zoning, as you've probably heard about tonight, requires 1.5 dwelling units for, in a multifamily setting. And it was, the, what's that?
What's that?
Yeah, it is.
I don't know, I'm not too familiar with that.
If you go to zoning bylaws, November 19th... As you can see, so the decision for the planning board was least to bring forward the change from 1.5 to 1 for further vetting and discussion at the public hearing. The recommendation originally to go to 1 is, there is a kind of a standard that has been borne out that 1 per dwelling unit works in mixed-use buildings, particularly in downtown settings, so the recommendation was to, to go to 1. So the planning board will kind of make a decision, you know, for feedback whether to make that change or to keep it the way it is. That was one change that was brought back. The second one is relative to I-4A1. And one, a couple of comments that came out of the, the public hearing was, and the public meetings, I shouldn't say public hearing, public meetings, was that the, the limitation on the footprint to the 15,000 square feet was really not allow for flexibility in building design, and it was driving, potentially could drive things up more vertically. So by increase, allowing for a little bit larger footprint, the development could have a little more flexibility as far as scaling it and massing it, and so provide some flexibility. The one comment, the, the change to cap out the size of a grocery or variety store, as you can see, is actually kind of a contrast from the original, the way the bylaw was, was really a much larger grocery store allowance in the, in the B1. And I think from the comments from the various meetings that there is a, like a desire and a want to have grocery in the downtown, but not a larger scale, one that's more scaled for a downtown, a village area, not a scale, a more supersized grocer. So ones that, so Brothers is much smaller, the one that's in Medfield, that has a much smaller footprint, but there are smaller grocery change that are around the 12,000, up to 15,000 square foot footprint, that there are different grocery stores that have smaller ones. Stop &amp; Shop has a smaller one that they've developed. There is one that Whole Foods does as well, so there are some smaller scale ones that probably would be a better fit for town center. So that, again, that's, was put in there. And in part, it was put in there maybe to send a message to Stop &amp; Shop that if they were theoretically holding on to a vacant piece of property, paying a lease to prevent some other larger grocer coming into the marketplace, that perhaps that might kind of change the dynamic and move them to maybe work with the town to realize some grocery store at that, at the town center property, which is 9 Liberty Lane, which is a vacant piece of land at the moment. Then, if we go down to the next one, which is I-4A6, the present zoning bylaw allows for 40 feet up to 46 feet, so the language is actually changed so that way you can go up to 46 feet in height, you can add a half story in the third, three and a half stories that again, to allow, so to give some flexibility as far as story height, so that way you can get higher roofs in height, but you also could have a little bit of hot, higher height on the first floor of a building, so sometimes you want to have a little bit more height on the first floor and then the residential could be a little bit less going up from there, so it creates some flexibility as far as the height goes. But overall, at the end, the maximum height is really no higher than what's in the bylaw today, but it's creating a little bit of flexibility as far as the, you could add a half story as a way to encourage some other units above. I think it makes sense to just go through these all and then we'll have kind of comments and go back, is that okay?
Sure. You're doing fine. Everybody's awake still.
Barely. Goodness. So I-4, I-4A11 is one of the, one of the pieces of the, of the recommendations where we have heard a lot of commentary about, originally it was proposed to remove the cap relative to the unit count in town center. And the reality is, there really is a cap in practicality because you have to, number one, there's a few properties that are connected to the wastewater treatment plant, which has a maximum flow of 30,000 gallons per day, but beyond that, the rest of the properties within the B1 are subject to onsite septic and they're subject to the local board health regulations and, you know, so really, density in part, there is a cap because you have to size a certain size septic system for each parcel. And as you probably understand, is that really that 10,000 gallons day is really the, the driver of a, of a septic system design, because once you get above that, you get a package treatment plant size. So when you take and look at a mixed-use project, you have to balance residential and commercial and fit your, your wastewater flows within that, and there's going to be different design components to it. So the, the thought, at least initially, there really is a cap, but for sake of providing some, I think assurance to the public at large, what was being proposed now, it's 16 units per acre and we're moving away from the idea of regulating based on bedrooms, which has the potential to be an issue with folks who want to challenge the validity of that from a fair housing practice, because it's really not good practice to zone based on bedrooms, from a housing point of view, fair housing. What we did provision, is being proposed, is to allow for higher density through the special permit process through the planning board. So there is a, an opportunity where it makes sense to allow for a little bit greater density, 16 units per acre. There's a path for someone to propose that through the permitting process. We go down to I-4B1A, I know there was, there was a lot of concern about reducing the buffer adjacent to the residential district, and in further analysis, there was really a small amount of properties, maybe three or four, that would be impacted by this, so an alternative approach was proposed, which essentially, it keeps it at 50 feet, which is the present requirement. The only difference is, and no indifference to the ZBA, is that it would go through the planning board as a special permit, thought being that these projects would have to go through the permitting process to the planning board, and oftentimes, as you, as you're doing just earlier, looking at design-related elements, is have it under one roof, so the planning board would receive impact, sorry, commentary from the butters and the permitting process and, and address it through that one permitting process, opposed to going from one permitting board to another. So it retains the requirements, it just changes who has the ability to entertain a special permit, if that's applicable on a project basis. I-6A is actually, the planning board would have the, the ability to waive required parking where it makes sense to, based upon non-peak demand. And where that would come into play is more in a mixed-use situation where you might have an office setting or a low, or a different peak demand for parking during the day versus nighttime, that the board could take that into account. The way the present bylaw is written, you have to reserve that area, so instead of putting somebody in a situation where we haven't looked at parking thoroughly onsite and offsite and kind of create a reserve area, the, as the value-wish, the permitting process, that somebody could seek waiver of that requirement through the planning board. But they have to have good cause that makes sense to do that. So that, that's a provision that's being modified today. If we go down to I-7, so this is another provision that we've played with a little bit to try and vet out the purposes and intent. Essentially, what, the intent here is to allow, there were situations where we had mixed-use buildings and they'll all be together in one building, commercial on the first floor, and then residential above, like next door. But there might be other occasions where a larger project, that somebody might want to have a, a building that's all residential, but an all-commercial building. So what was concerning in the first version of this was to create some design flexibility, there was allowance of residential on the first floor, and what this version does is strikes that out, so that's not the case any longer, what's being proposed. What's being proposed now, it's, it's non-residential on the first floor. And then there's a...
Excuse me, Rich, it's, it will be commercial on the first floor?
It will be commercial on the first floor.
We had a big problem with that before.
Yes.
That, that is now out?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's out, in this version. Secondarily, what we have done is created a principal building and then a secondary building, and essentially what we, we define those as well. So there may be that situation where the, the front building is all commercial, of course, it could be a mix of commercial and residential, but the principal building has to have commercial on the ground floor, then the secondary one would, can be all residential, but it's, it's, it's secondary to the principal building, and if you, it's a little bit further down, we'll get to it, but...
For our new definition of principal buildings and secondary buildings, to spell out the intent of that, and I'll just hold on that. We'll, we'll come to that when we go along. And then one of the things that we did discuss and were retaining is the build to line that already exists within the zoning bylaw, that's being retained, we're not modifying that at all, which is that the principal building has to be placed within the, the build to line, which is that 6 to 19 feet.
Go to, keep scrolling down. Now, this, this is something that we added, and it'll be probably divested and discussed a little bit more, which is essentially, in situations where the site might be tighter, to allow the ground floor to have some parking, so it's a combination of commercial and parking, and then residential above. Because there are cases where having some parking on the ground floor makes sense to then service the commercial as well as the residential above, depending on the site. So the thought is, this creates a little bit of flexibility. I think there is still some discussion about that, that perhaps this may, may get cut, it may not advance forward. But, and I think one of the, but anyway, that at least is being proposed right now, as just, again, creating some flexibility, allowance for flexible site design. We go to the next one down, which is bold. This is where we get into building placement.
Where are you, Rich?
It's on the same, it's, oh, I'm sorry.
H-11.
No, no, right there. Okay. This is where we get, again, dive into the-
Bottom four.
Yeah, it's still part of-
There we go. Okay.
Wait, wait. I was getting ahead of myself.
Don't you-
What? He's all right.
I'm all right.
All right?
I was just ahead of you, that's all.
All right.
He was dozing. Don't worry, Rich.
Oh, no, come on. This is exciting to you.
It is.
All right. All right. So anyway, this is where we clarify the language about, again, and clear the intent with the principal building located in the build to line. Again, we don't, you can read for yourself, I don't want to read the whole thing, but that's where we intended to clarify things, where commercial on the ground floor, and then the building locations. What we did do, what we added in here is a, we already have a 10% inclusionary bylaw provision for affordable housing. Here, we've upped it by 5%. So, and this is specific to the B1 zone right now. So if you're proposing a mixed use development, it would require 15% affordable component to it, which is greater than the present zoning bylaw. They're not quite up to the 40B requirements. And then the last piece is the principal building, secondary building, and again, is to try to define what those are as far as placement goes, and also the intent of those. So it feels as if, I think we've gotten feedback, heard from some of the things that were kind of concerns to people. Hopefully, we've responded with addressing some of the, well, hopefully, all those concerns in one way or the other. But I understand that, you know, there's still some concerns related to these changes. But I think one of the things, as I said at the beginning, that's important, is that the goal overall is to try to create some flexibility in B1 zone, provide opportunity for property owners and developers to do more mixed use in Town Center, use our zoning as a vehicle for opportunity, and try to achieve some of the goals of Town, mixed use, active uses, restaurants, et cetera. And we do have essentially, like I mentioned today, there are caps really on how much development can be built within Town Center with our existing permit, permitting system between the planning board, board of health, et cetera. So, although, yes?
I have a question, and I probably just, I'm just unclear. So the previous applicant came forth, and when they were talking about the change from the restricted housing to rental, they said that the calculation was that it went from 1.52 cars per unit to 1.82 cars per unit, is what their calculation changes to.
Right.
And I'm just trying to equate that to the single family dwelling of one per unit on the very first article number one.
Yeah, so it's not going to quite equate out only as well, in this case, what we're doing with the zoning, because there is a commercial component to what's happening under the zoning bylaw. So the, the park, that parking requirement will be applicable to the dwelling units within the mixed use development, but the commercial will be subject to the existing zoning bylaws, like the one space per 200, the one space per 300. So you'll have to take how many dwelling units, that would be the parking number, and then take the square footages of the commercial, and apply that parking requirement, and then add the two together, which then will get you the number. So-
So in effect, it's a tradeoff between the, the commercial-
Yeah.
-parking requirement, which is not changing.
Which is not changing.
Okay. Which gets into the discussion you had, where in the evenings, when you have, when you have the dwellers in the units, and, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And I think, you know, one of the things that we should recognize, we're providing minimum, if there's some way that comes forward, and they think, you know, based on their projected needs, they could put more parking. We're just trying to be, you know, at least responsive. And I think that that's what it does, but you're right, so.
But that only applies to the mixed use.
That's it. The commercial still has to abide by what's in the zoning bylaw.
Rich, has anyone laid this out in sort of a visual format? I mean, we look at the B1, and we really, we have only a few, I'd say, blocks. We have obviously the Stop and Shop block in front of Walgreens. Then we have the Holmes Building between the post office and 194. Then we have Wayside Crossing, probably I would say down to the Holmes Building. I don't think I would include the Holmes Building, because I think it's a newer, pretty well-established structure. And then we have the Pazzini Structure, which includes the dry cleaners and the, and the liquor store. And then we have obviously the small lot next to Dunkin' Donuts. Has anyone, have they, have you, is, I think it was MACC or whatever?
So MACC-
Have they done a visual that if you built this out in this new format, what this would look, what this could look like in a maximum format? And then have they looked at a traffic study at all? I know we, I think you, I heard you earlier tonight say something about how they haven't done any kind of traffic study on this. No one, has anyone done any traffic study that if you add all these to the maximum amount, what will our center really, what will happen to it?
So they did take, and then part of the materials that are on, through this planning process, they are on the website, people go back to look at some of those, looking at particular parcels within the B1, and looking at a new building at that site under the new zoning. What we're, so that is there. What we're, what we're going to turn to right now is putting FAQs together, and then base it off of what's being proposed right now, because we kind of bounced around with different ideas and concepts, so we're going to do that as well, and we're going to put that out there for the public to take a look at it, and get it out there before the hearing on the 20, 28th of October. And then also, as relative to the traffic, we'll, we will put something, some response to the FAQs related to traffic. The thing about the traffic, and I understand that, I did see the questioning, is this is, which makes it, not sure how valuable the traffic study can be, only because there are, there are combinations of things, scenarios that could happen on a particular piece of property. So you really, as you saw tonight, you have, you know, let's say you've got 60 units of apartments, there's ITE Institute for Traffic Engineers, they have traffic generation based on certain use categories, and then you could assign traffic, so you can do projections on traffic related to different uses. The harder part about doing this related to a zoning change, and is particularly related to an area, is there's going to be different combinations, what that can have. So it's hard to quantify in a traffic study. Now, that's not to say that there aren't traffic related differences, but we're going to, I think I would kind of phrase it this way, that each one of these projects would have to go through a permitting process, where traffic impact analysis is part of the permitting process. So at, at the end of the day, if this were to pass, it's still going to have to go through a permitting process, where traffic will be evaluated on a project by project basis. And then, to answer the question about the buildout, we did do it, the only, and we're going to actually, we did it in relation to, originally, we were working it, we had talked about floor area ratio as a measurement to how to generate density. So Josh from MAPPC is going to update the, the buildout numbers, and we'll have that available based on what we're looking at now, to give people a better idea of what this could be as far as buildout goes.
He also has, I think prepared, like, some just graphics showing what the different scales of buildings.
He did. Yeah, so we have, we have those. So we'll kind of condense it into now more tailored towards what is being proposed, because we did bounce around with different options. So we will, we will do that going forward.
Couple of comments, Rich. What's the thinking behind the secondary buildings not located within the build to line, can be 100% residential, including dwelling units on the ground floor? And I have a follow-up question, after you answer my, answer that.
Sure. So we, we presently allow that within the zoning bylaw? So right now, within the zoning bylaw, you can have, it's ratioed, it's 65/35, but you can have a all residential building within the B1 zone. And I think the thought process behind that was, there could be parcels that may develop or redevelop that would be a combination of, of commercial and some secondary all residential to allow that to happen. The, I think one of the concerns was location, and where they were placed, and proximity necessarily than residential. So that's, that's where that came from.
Okay. I mean, I just, I want to study this a little bit more. I'm troubled by some of the things that are in here, quite honestly. I know a lot of people put some time and effort into this, but I think back 20 years ago, when we had an economic development committee, which I was on, and we, you know, decked around with the, with some of the bylaws, changing parking, doing this and that. And, and, and for my thinking, if we want commercial in our downtown, why aren't we looking at how stormwater is treated, and how, you know, how sewage is treated, looking at a sewage treatment plant to encourage business? I mean, if we ever want, I mean, 20 years ago, we did practically the same thing. Maybe the conclusions are a little bit different. What's been done? Not much. We've got a Walgreens in another building, that's about it. So I don't know, I think they missed the mark on this. If we, if I, if the goal is to get business downtown, why aren't we studying what it would cost to have a sewage treatment plant, so we could add infrastructure? Because right now, we don't have the infrastructure to, to support business. I mean, I know that's a generalization, but-
Yeah.
-there's no discussion in here at all about, and maybe I missed it, stormwater treatment and sewage treatment, and those, those are the two big issues from my perspective. I don't want to be 20 years, wait another 20 years for something to happen, because we've already made that mistake once. And I, I don't want to say this is a mistake, you know, because I know a lot of people put some hard work into this, but I kind of, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you've missed the boat here, with this opportunity.
Yeah, so I think, you know, one of the comments, or at least the commentary we hear from some of the property owners when they commit, and we did have workshop meetings with property owners, is that, you know, to, we have some existing buildings, but we also have a lot of, you know, vacant green fields that are going to be developed. And so the economics to, to put it in new development, under the new requirements, you need to have kind of a mix of residential to support the commercial from an economic standpoint, because it's not easy, as you know, to build a brand new commercial building, and then try to fit it out with commercial tenants at a rent that they can handle from an affordability to try to bring in commercial tenants. So the offset, the idea is that you kind of have a balance, a mix of residential and commercial to make that happen.
I'm just curious, are they going to be taxed commercially? I know our commercial tax base right now is the same as residential, so would they be taxed commercially?
So they'll be ta, they'll be taxed, the value would be on a commercial, but it will still be the same rate, because we don't have a split rate.
Rates change?
Yep.
Once you get established, they do change?
Yep. So we don't, at the present, generally speaking, you know, assessors start to look at splitting tax rates when you get up to 80/20 split. We don't have anywhere near that, we're in the 5% range. I mean, the, I think, you know, so they will be commercially valued, but at a single rate.
Single rate.
Yeah.
And Rich, isn't the goal to kind of allow, right now, all the costs of the septic, you know, subsurface, you know, stormwater systems, that, and then the restrictive zoning that doesn't allow for, you know, more dense development, those two things combined, it really doesn't provide the, the opportunity for developers to say, okay, you know, I can, there is a project here.
I agree. No, that, that's the comment we, we've heard from property owners. Now, to get back to the sewer, you know, we have the wastewater treatment plant in Town Center. It really was not designed and intended as a municipal wastewater treatment plant. You know, it was through the development project in the past that the town of Norfolk became the caretaker and the operator of that wastewater treatment plant. We, we have considered looking at expanding that, but, but honestly, the cost and the analysis needed to go through the permitting process and look at it from design is significant. We, we did apply for a grant to try to fund that study, to look at it, was a, was just under $225,000 to, to do that work. We have property owners that want, they would like to expand the sewer, and we may need to still kind of work that issue, but we're, you know, we don't, we don't have a lot of money that we can just dedicate necessarily to kind of move out on some of these infrastructure issues. So we're trying to do what we can within our budget.
Yeah. And one follow-up question, Rich. The, I mean, if you do some quick math, if you change all these bylaws, we're looking at a potential of 500 or more units in our B1 district, and there's been no traffic study done. So, I mean, to cringe the numbers, I think, I think you folks have done that, have tried to do that. There's going to be, you could potentially get about 500 units in our downtown, if I'm right, correct me if I'm wrong, and, and no traffic study's been done to analyze that. You're looking at a 128, 24 hours a day, seven days a week out here in our Town Center, you know? And look at the DePlacido Building. That was done by our existing bylaws. And that's a beautiful building, it's got plenty of parking, it's got apartments upstairs, businesses downstairs. I don't know, I, I think they've, they've missed the boat here. Again, these are generalizations, but when I look at the big picture on this, it's, it's troubling, very troubling.
Okay, so a couple of points. We did take a look at, as part of this analysis, looking at the existing bylaw in relation to property and property size. Essentially, the numbers were scaling out on what's next door, it's about 30,000 square foot lot. When you start to look at a larger lot, the bylaw bump up against the school in the economics. I will say this, this is what I mentioned earlier- I will say this, this is what I mentioned earlier, is if you, if you go about and you calculate a number based on, and I think, what were you doing, units per acre? Just trying to do rough math?
Rough math.
Well, so you got to work back into that math that we are requiring parking. So you have to cite the parking based on the bylaw requirements on the property to support what that development is. So if you take five-hundred, I guess, I think, right? That's the number?
Yeah.
Take-
Give or take ten.
Okay, that's five-hundred parking spaces, not accounting the commercial.
Give or take ten.
You've got to put, you've got to put the parking on the property. You have to put the stormwater on the property. You've got to put the wastewater on the property. You start to add all those components together, you're not going to reach it. And this is kind of the complexity of this discussion, because on one hand, I think you, I think you said it, Mike, was a fair point. We want to bring in the sewer, we want to do the stormwater. So that's going to drive up, are you trying to drive up density to make it, you know, so?
Try to drive the ability for a business to open up here. A restaurant, I mean, restaurants not going to open up here. Their septic is so huge.
So that's why, one of the things that we're discussing is with the Board of Health about looking back at their requirement, which is, right now, they require a new construction. You have to design for a garbage grinder. So I met with the Board of Health last month to discuss revisiting that requirement, because under Title V, you don't have to, you know, we mandate you design for a garbage grinder. And that's just a residential component, but you have to do it, which oversizes a septic system, which is driving up wastewater requirements, which is driving people to pick other pathways to do development because of these local requirements. So I understand, I'm not saying these aren't issues and concerns to be looked at, but it's not as magically fits all together. And I'm trying to do something that provides some opportunity.
I think this raises a lot of questions, you know, I think.
I think, I'm sure, I'm not going to disagree with you. But I also, we're hoping that we provide a pathway for property owners to look and say, you know what, maybe I can do mixed use, and I'm not going to pick a different door that has much greater impact on the town.
So you're trying to create a forum where we could attract conventional builders and work with them? And maybe we could end up with more than five-hundred units if they took the forty-B route? Is that what you're trying to do?
Yeah, the forty-B route would create-
Okay, so trying to attract the convention builder?
Right.
Okay.
Which also gives the town more control over the projects.
Right. There's more local control with it. I think, you know, if we had, you know, I think you probably could see, I don't want to look to a particular property, but honest, I think you look at some properties that have gone one direction. And I think, you know, maybe if there was flexibility within the zoning, maybe there could have been a different direction for the property to choose, which could have been mixed use. And the economics could work, because they would work under wastewater requirements that are having you over-design a system and push somebody in a different direction. And that's, that's what we're hopefully trying to achieve here.
Rich, if I can just, you know, add on to what you're saying about the traffic. You know, I, I thought that the B-ones thought on that whole, the traffic issue was, you know, like you said, you can't, you can't just picture everything at once, because you got to look at projects as they come up, and you have to analyze the traffic as the projects come up. So you can, you know, you can really understand what that traffic is. The traffic in, you know, a couple of years down the road might be different from what it is today.
Right. I think one of the, as you probably will all know, one of the things that, you know, addressing, you know, with the MBTA, we have the community around Norfolk Center, which is an asset, but it also contributes to the traffic congestion in the center. And I know, I understand they're working on the signalizing, so that way, when the train is in the station, you know, the gate doesn't shut, and it gives time, relief on it. So, you know, the station is in the center of town, and one of the things that I think, hopefully, with the idea of people living in a mixed-use setting in downtown, they're not driving, they're walking to the station. And so the, the traffic generation is going to be more, it could be more pedestrian-oriented and not, you know, so it creates a little bit of options for downtown.
Rich, I don't know if you've driven through Walpole Center lately, but I get a little scared when I drive through Walpole Center and look at all the apartments that they've amassed in their downtown next to the train station. It's, I encourage you to go over there, take a look. You've, you've seen those, haven't you?
Yeah. Great point. And actually-
I mean, that's, that's what I envisioned by these, is the same thing happening here.
Well, just point of fact-
And correct me, correct me if I'm wrong.
Absolutely. So one difference, which we don't have in Norfolk Center, is wastewater, we don't have sewer. So what's, you know, they are on a wastewater system. So the, the limitation of build-out is removed. In addition to that, they allow, that's a five-story building. We're talking three-and-a-half stories. So you can't get to the height that's even in the building. We have setbacks off the street, off the property line, excuse me, not actually the street. So the building would be at the build-to line, that six to nineteen feet. There's no commercial on the first floor in that building. What's on the first floor? It's parking. So we're, we would have mixed use here. So they're, they're not the same by any means, and the infrastructure is not the same. So that's why it can, you know, I understand, but, but these bylaws aren't, you can't produce what you see in Walpole Center. There's limitations.
No, if you're for a forty-B project, and then our, our bylaws are even less restrictive than they are now, I'd see, I can see quite a few units out there.
What do you mean, the existing bylaw?
I know, if we change our bylaws, they're probably not going to even need a waiver from parking or some of these less restrictive, less restrictive bylaws that you're proposing. Though you could get that density.
You still have to get the height. You still have to have the, meet the wastewater requirements, even at that, so we're not-
I mean, to, to use the mainstream, the obvious, you see what the max unit count is before you have to put in a, you know, I don't know the cost of a wastewater treatment plant, but it's not cheap. And I imagine that costs, that drives the cost way up. And, you know, with some, with that type of restriction, you're really limited on what your max build-out is.
Look at the project we just, just had a hearing on. One of the reasons he went from the seventy-four units to the sixty units, is he said if you dropped the fifty-five and older requirement, there was a different calculation used as it relates to septic requirements, wastewater requirements, which is why he went to sixty units.
Yeah, it's Title V.
Title V.
It was a Title V, yeah. So he could, he could only support sixty units in that space if it wasn't fifty-five and older. That was the real answer.
Yeah, because you want, that ten-thousand gallons a day is the driver to, if you get above that, you have to have a wastewater treatment plant. And, I mean, you can, I think, do shared systems, but you have to have the area to be able to, you know, the building to do that. But you still have to stay, you still have to stay under the ten-thousand gallons a day. And then when you cost in a wastewater treatment plant, the density has to be much higher to absorb building a wastewater treatment plant and then maintaining and operating it. So it really drives the density up significantly. So that's really kind of your, if you will, a cap on how large these development projects can be. I certainly, I think, one thing maybe for part of this discussion with the F-A-Q, maybe get some costing out of a wastewater treatment plant that we could put in it to maybe kind of illustrate better this point to people.
And quite honestly, if the town actually had a wastewater treatment plant that any landowner could tie into, you would have, you actually have no way that, you know, a forty-B project could come in, build as many units as they want.
Well, right now, the wastewater treatment plant that the town owns is on the top of the hill. Stop and Shop can tie into that, correct?
Correct.
And Mr., the other vacant lot in front of Walgreens can tie into that. Who else is, can tie into that? Is there a third lot, or are those the only two lots?
So next, so Walgreens and Silas is in?
Walgreens is tied into it.
Stop and Shop, and then the property in between, which is between Liberty and Main Street.
Yeah. I mean, if, okay, that's it. But I mean, if we had a wastewater treatment plant furthered out of town, just think of the current owners of these buildings, what they could do to their buildings. They could improve them. I mean, that would be an incentive right there for them to improve their buildings.
Right. But I think-
Maybe go higher, add apartments, dress them up, make them, make them look nicer. I mean, nothing was looked at in this report to try to get our current building owners to do something to their buildings, unless I missed it.
Well, there's, it's kind of, it's layered in one sense. So one is that, again, looking to the, well, you're talking about the existing buildings?
Hmm, yeah.
Well, this, this hopefully would create some flexibility for them. It might not, it might not, and I think we recognize actually, there's potential that some of these properties might not even be able to do the redevelopment they want under these proposed changes. The infrastructure is a piece of it for them. I know that a couple of those buildings that you mentioned met with the property owners, and that they would like to have access to the sewer. I know Dunkin' Donuts, we had talked with them, and they would have liked to have the sewer extended down there, because it would create them, give them more flexibility, just to be able to design their site differently for a new building. But we're at thirty-thousand gallons a day. It's, it's being paid for on allocation basis to be able to use un, or if they're not, and they're not flowing at their allocation amount, but the permitting to go through the D-E-P that's required to demonstrate that there is available capacity, and then to get a system designed and to them, the piping and so forth, and the pumping, is a significant cost to do all that permitting, planning, and design. And we were, like I said, we were hoping to be able to take a look at that, to see if we can build upon that existing plan. And I know-
So, Rich, don't interrupt you, but if, if the Stop and Shop lot and this other vacant lot tied into it, would it be at a hundred percent capacity? Or is there still a capacity beyond that?
So they would, they would use up that capacity. They are, they are reserving their capacity on allocation basis. So, for example, Stop and Shop and the other properties, that piece of it is, let's see, thirteen-thousand gallons a day between all that property.
Okay.
And then the, you have all the condominiums up on the hill, they have share. And then there's still, Borelli has retained some capacity up by the, next to the well, the cell tower. So there's four entities that are paying for that allocational share. So for the commercial properties, that's their allocation, thirteen-thousand gallons that they distribute amongst that. It's not a high, it's, it's not a very large, as you know, you just-
So that limits what can be built there.
Absolutely, absolutely. So-
There's no reserve, there's no reserve capacity.
No, basically, so that's the bottom line, yeah.
That's it, that's it.
There isn't.
So that's why the solution is perhaps another wastewater treatment facility someplace else in the downtown area.
And I think that's, that is still something that will be evaluated and still looking at in the long term. But, you know, hopefully, there, I think maybe these changes could generate some additional opportunities. I think on one hand, people look at the zoning bylaw and think we've, you know, people are going to rush in here and dot a bunch of buildings and all those vacant properties, but there's a lot that goes into it. So that would be awesome, but I'm not sure. I mean, on the other side, we're not concerned, we've gone far enough. So, you know, it's kind of, it's a, and I, and I understand the concerns, and I, hopefully, what we'll do, we'll have the F-A-Qs put together, available to the public. We'll have the public hearing on October, well, the Plan Board will have the whole the public hearing on October twenty-eighth.
Well, there'll be a traffic study on by the twenty-eighth?
No. No.
I didn't, I knew the answer to that question before I asked it. I mean, that's a big piece of this puzzle that's missing. I mean, at full build-out, what's the traffic look like? No one's even thought about that, Rich. I mean, that's, that's going to be a big concern.
Changes head in our ways, you know?
I know.
I'm probably not going to be able to satisfy you with an answer, because I don't think, and I understand.
Yeah, I mean, that would, that was, that's the first thing that jumped out at me when I looked at this. I mean, that's what we always talk about, we talked about it tonight, we always talk about traffic.
I know, but when you just talked about it tonight, it was based on a specific project, based on a, a development portfolio. So in this case, it's sixty apartments, one, two, and three. When you talk about traffic study, it's based on something. It's, you know, X-numbered dwelling units, a restaurant, office space, retail space. It's not a theoretical exercise of trying to play with different development scenarios that could happen out of it.
I certainly want to know that, what those different scenarios look like.
There, there could be a hundred, I don't think there could be hundreds of different scenarios.
Pick, pick the top three scenarios. I mean, you doesn't, you don't have to a hundred, but you can at least give us a sense of what traffic would look like.
I think we can, I will-
Am I wrong, Chris?
No.
We will attempt to provide something to address this comment.
All right.
Are you going to try to put this in like a chart methodology, a little better than this one? You know, try to summarize in like, in some bigger, in some better bullets, because I think this is going to get very confusing as you get beyond the public hearing to a town meeting.
Yeah, this is going to be very confusing. I mean, I was-
Yeah, but I think you'd be able to figure it out in some format, what's there, what's leaving.
Yeah, so what, well, I said earlier, and I'll just, so F-A-Qs is frequently asked questions. So some of the questions that have come up so far through this process, we will put in there. This is the question, and this is response, and some of the, and we will address some of the comments that have come up through this, traffic being, I will try to provide something for you, short of a traffic study per se, but to try some order of magnitude.
Good. Lot of work. Everybody should be there, what's the, twenty-eighth at seven o'clock? Was it to be at the junior high school or at the Raymond Kennedy?
October twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
No, it's here.
Oh, it's here?
It's here, yeah, I'm afraid it's here.
So.
Not going to be enough room, I don't know. I was at the last one, I don't think there's going to be enough room.
If there's not enough room, we'll-
Figure it out.
Figure it out, yeah.
All right.
And then, you know, the step would be, again, the, so the Plan Board will hold a public hearing, and they will make recommendations. And they're, based upon the recommendations, will then move to town meeting.
My experience with the mixed use setup is that the, it's looked more compact. It's not like this big box of apartments. My visual and my experience with them, from Brookline Village up to other units in Norwood and Westwood, there's some mixed use in Norwood and Westwood, is that it, it's not like one big box of, it's housing. It seems more compact. I don't know. But I don't know if this is going to actually come back fortyBs, but you're saying it will open up the playing field a bit.
Yeah, that, that-
You going to go through the F-eleven with us, or were you going to do that or no? Was that just for our reading?
For your-
A reading? The F-eleven?
Yeah, unless you want to-
No, is there any highlights to it? I mean, you're removing it from the, from the commissioner to the planning board, correct? Is that the highlight of that?
No, actually. No, actually, it's, I'll go through it.
Did you want to, or was that part of your?
Um, you can if you want. I think, well, I don't know.
It's up to you.
I can go over.
You've got the floor.
What page is that on, Chris?
Huh?
What page is that on?
That's, uh, page 5.
Five.
You've got Mike on the edge of his seat now.
I'll sit back.
All right. What we, we've been through a couple of ways to try to address some changes to the site plan approval with the planning board. One was more of a, I'll say, a wholesale change to it, and then put in a new one in place. And that discussion was a nonstarter, shall we say? I don't think that's the best way to put it. So then, went back to the drawing board, essentially said, all right, we'll work within the existing F-11. F-11 is the whole entire site plan approval bylaw, and, and go through it by section by section, and see what we can do, hopefully, to improve upon it. And one of the, the material change from the present version is that it's built upon that you have a site plan that's already been approved by the planning board.
Good.
Okay? So that's the basis of it. Right now, the way the, the bylaw is written, that's not the case, as you know. You have the F-11A, the non-applicability, which someone could apply for determination, and you might not need to go through the site plan approval process. That, that has been removed, and it's been replaced with, you have to have a site plan. We changed up the language a little bit as well. Instead of, right now, we have the non-applicability, and then we have site plan exemption, and then we have the full site plan. And so we tried to tier it, to keep a little, hopefully, a little bit simpler to, to go through and understand. So F-11A1 is a site plan approval not required. And there's criteria related to that. What we, so some of the key pieces of this is under site plan not, site plan approval not required. Again, you have to have a site plan in place, and then you have to provide information to the, to the, this is one of the comments that town council had. Didn't really say who it's to, but the determination is, is, is twofold, two-tiered, I guess. We originally looked at building commissioner, town planner, and planning board chairman, or chairperson. At the last planning board meeting, the discussion was to try to tier, you know, building commissioner, town planner, as far as going through evaluating these. I think what we'll, if this goes forward and gets approved, I think we're still, we're still going to monitor it, see what we're are, whether we need to-
I think the changes are made to good.
But we've done that.
Did you agree?
We've-
Street cleaned it up.
We've cleaned it up. We've clarified some things as far as to remove some of the subjectivity that was in the existing bylaw, which I think was where, you know, I think issues can arise, which they have over time, and kind of keep it straightforward. So you have the site plan not required, and you can read through the requirements, what triggers that. Site plan modification, there's certain criteria related to that, and then site plan full approval, and it's tiered. So we tried to have a situation where it's site plan modification, something that didn't have to go through the full site plan process, but would go through the modification process. The planning board still has ultimate authority that if it's determined that, in the case of, you know, site plan modification, it goes to them, they could say it requires full site plan approval.
Rich, what happens in the case of a tie between, or a split decision between the zoning enforcement officer and the town planner?
Yeah, so this is, this is the one-
They have to arm wrestle.
We do a duel out in the back parking lot.
Yeah, probably have a duel. So that, I mean, that, in essence, that, that's why I liked at least-
It's a good solution.
The three, the three-party approach that are-
I like the duel.
But I think-
Goes to the ZBA.
We'll see how this works out as we apply it, but it could be, you might, I don't know.
Could get a little hairy, yeah.
Could be more people go to the planning board than originally wanted.
Right.
At least, we don't have to deal with them.
But-
Very darn.
But we are doing some things, which I think if you read through it, you know, owner, the owner involvement through the determination process, you know, different things that have come up to hopefully clarify it. And-
Have we got some new definitions coming too?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not in here though, right?
New definitions?
Can you say some new definitions? We're also going to see.
That was related to the B1?
Right.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Yeah, that's the B1.
I do too. I like the arm wrestling.
Hey, so while we're at it, I'll just finish it up, right? I'll tell you all the zoning, and then we'll- We'll be done for the night.
Okay.
Are we here? Can we do these minutes next time?
Yeah.
He's not done yet.
Oh, okay. Oh, geez, okay.
He's still going.
All right.
Take your time, Mike.
Give Rich the floor.
We still have to do a minor mod-
We still have a minor modifications in tonight. It could take a while.
All right, well, I'll, I'll put it up quickly here. One of the things that we, I think, hopefully took some cues from the ZBA, I think-
Finally listening to a smart group of people.
It's about time.
Was that we've had the situations where somebody's proposing to park in the front yard.
Yep, yes.
And instead of going to the ZBA, we're switching that to the planning board, so it's all where it belongs.
That's where it belongs, right, Don?
That's right, it's where it belongs. Hopefully, we'd be happy about that change.
Very, very.
And then the, the other article that, well, too, but- They're really interrelated, is the Holbrook Street well. We're adding the, we're creating that new zone 2 for the well. Remember, we had, we were looking at that in the spring of this year, but there, there was some additional testing that was done, which modified the zone 2, so we held back in the spring. That zone 2 has now been finalized, reviewed, approved by the DEP. So now we need to just incorporate it onto our, as an overlay, on top of the zoning map, and-
Can't dump your motor oil.
And that will be, uh-
I heard you were down there.
And we're, so that, that, and then, related to that, is, is just updating the zoning map in sections, well, the date, that's all, C2A. It refers back to April 2nd, 2002 zoning map, which we did update, you know, there's been other updates, so just more of a clarification to make sure it coincides with what we're doing with the zoning map. That's being proposed. So I know, hopefully, I answered some questions, some I have not.
I'm sorry, Rich, I still have, where does it talk about the change to F-7B1A on parking? Where does it say that has to do with mixed use?
Well-
In other words, I'm looking at page 59 in our bylaws, and, and, and we just had a discussion, and the person said, your bylaw says 1.5 per unit, and I'm putting in 1.82 per unit, and I'm saying, okay, does that mean that in some scenario, someone wants to put up 70 apartments, okay, and they're only going to put in 70 spaces?
So under, so, F-7B1A?
Yes.
Is, is the parking requirement for dwelling units other than single-family homes?
Right. But, but, so in other words, a apartment house, okay, okay, would be something other than a single-family dwelling, correct?
Correct. Yes.
So, so in effect, we would be lowering the minimum amount of parking-
Right.
From 1 and 1/2 to 1.
Yes. And the rationale behind that?
Yes. Okay, I understand when you say mixed, in mixed use, that made the rationale, but it doesn't say anyplace relative to what you have here on page 1, where it refers to in a mixed-use environment.
Yeah, it doesn't explicitly say that. That's, that's the, so the parking requirement there is for mixed use.
So would you, would you add that to, so, I guess what I'm saying is, is a developer came in and said, hey, I, I exceeded your parking requirement. Forget 40B, non-40B, I exceeded your parking requirement of, of 1 and 1/2, okay, and I'm going to put 110 parking spaces in, in, in this building, in this complex.
Okay.
All right? And suddenly, if this change is correct, that developer would have come in and said, potentially, well, I'm, you know, exceeding it, or I'm, I'm putting in 60, 60 parking spaces, and, and others for, and we would insist on others for, for visitors and stuff, but it's not enough. So I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand this 1.5 as it relates to what we just went through the last hour and a half, and why that would, would be reduced to 1, unless it specifies it was a mixed-use environment. That makes sense?
It should specify. It should, yes.
It's section I, 7A, which is within the B1 zone. Page 3.
Page 1.
So what we, what we are describing allowed in the, we are not allowing an all-residential project in the B1 zone. It has to be mixed use. So you-
But the back building can be all residential.
I, I agree. I'm not saying that, but you have to have a commercial component related to it.
So that back building could be all 70 units, 70 parking spaces, correct?
It could. Or it could be 70 units above it. But you have to have a commercial component, which will require to meet the minimum parking requirements in the, in the B1 zone. You can't have a pure residential project in the B1 zone, under the way the zoning bylaw is being modified here. So it is mixed use. It can be mixed within the building, or it's a commercial standalone building, and then residential on the same property. So either together or separate, but you still have to have commercial. You still have to meet the commercial requirement. It very well may be, and not to, that this might not make it through. It may just, it may not move forward on this. So just, this has been a, it's been a common, it's been a common concern of multiple people, so I'm not sure this is going to go forward. Originally, we took it out. We took, it was, came forward, we took it out. When we met, when I met with the planning board, we went through the zoning. They decided to put it in for further consideration of public hearing. What I'm suggesting to you is, I'm not sure it'll get a favorable recommendation out of the 28th meeting, so it might be going away.
So just to further understand, in the B1 district?
Yes.
If I wanted to build an apartment house, okay, not a, non-40B, and I wanted to build a, some apartment house, okay, I couldn't do that unless it had a commercial component under today's or the proposed zoning regulations?
Right. Yes. Yes.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay.
All good questions. I appreciate the questions, because these are questions I've already heard.
I mean, a commercial component could, you know, very well be an ATM machine, huh? It could be like an ATM machine.
Another good question. And that's why we came up with the principal building definition, so that wouldn't happen.
Okay.
That, that was another concern, that somebody would try to put in a ATM or a building that-
Never thought of that.
200 square feet. No, it did, it did, it has come up, and that, hopefully, the, the response to that was the, the principal building and the secondary building to address that.
Rich, on the definition for the secondary building-
Mm-hmm.
-on that topic, it says the building shall be less important and prominent. What does that mean, less important?
Depends, um-
Who determines less important?
What page were you on, Tim?
Page.
Page 5.
So I would say to you that, that definition is going to be interpreted by the, I don't know, the planning board, and I suppose maybe-
Accessory use?
The, I think principally it'd be the planning board, because the other ones are going to-
And what would you think would fall under, what would, what do we mean by less important?
I think it's more as far as the scale, but not necessarily, it's, not to say like the secondary building is not important to the project, but it's not as prominent, it's not as large, it's not, it doesn't, it's not the focal point of when it's, it's mixed like that.
Well, it does define the prominent, prominent in terms of its position to the property's size, scale, architectural massing, but a good point with the other one.
Do you mean access, do you mean accessory use, not the main use?
No, he's talking about the, no, the, the principal, the secondary building.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's more of a artful way of describing the, the buildings, not like, it's more important than the second, the first. You're not agreeing with word choice, I guess? I don't know. We're open to interpretation. Yeah.
It shall be less important. So it's going to be accessory use, it's not going to be the main use of that property. Is that what you mean by less important?
Wouldn't be accessory use.
No?
No. It's not quite accessory, it's secondary?
Mm-hmm. But you got to be careful when you start saying accessory buildings.
It's not accessory, it's secondary.
Right, right.
Yeah, it's not, they're not, they're not accessory.
A whole different bylaw for that.
Right. We're not talking accessory, but it's really to kind of establish some proportionality between the main, the principal building and the secondary building.
I'm just curious, did you, did you get any feedback from prospective builders when you did this? Like, what they would be interested in? You did, okay.
I think we'll go forward, we'll have the meeting on the 28th, we'll get the feedback. I think we'll-
Clean it up a little bit.
What's that?
Clean it up a little, right?
Well, we can clean it up a little bit, as long as we're within kind of the confines of-
Right.
The bylaw. Yeah.
I think they're trying to get it on early at town meetings, so that it's early in the evening as well.
Yeah.
Anything else, Rich?
No, I think that-
We weren't going to discuss the fee structure, were we, tonight, or did you, did you bring that?
The only commentary is a- Uh, the only commentary is, I've got to get back to you more quickly on the fee structure than originally thought, because we're, we've had a lot more hearings than originally anticipated.
Yeah.
So we're, just burning, we burnt through our, uh, budget for the public hearing, so we're going to come back with, uh, either we, we might just, for now, just modify the fee. So there's a fee to the town, and a fee to make sure the applicants are paying for the advertisement cost, and then revisit, you know, I know the board said, you know, how, how much time is spent per applicant, you know, to try to come up with a, a better, um, fee, perhaps, or justify that fee amount? I might just come back and say, look, I think we're going to have to do this, so we could, at least, the money comes in, and we can pay the paper out, because right now, the way the budget works, you know, as part of the fee, there's a fee goes to the, you know, general fund, and, and then the advertisement, it's all rolled in one, and we don't get it out. You know, so we're, the money doesn't come back to the department until a year later, you know, because of watch-through, so.
Right.
So I'm probably going to come back to you shortly and just propose that for now, and then we can kind of revisit the, the town side of the fee.
Alright. And Mr. Chairman, for the record, I, I'd like to have Rich memorialize some of our concerns when he goes back and addresses the public and the, the planning board, express the concerns that the, the board has raised tonight. I mean, I, I'd like to kind of memorialize that, or formalize it in some shape or form, either, I don't know, if you do it by a vote, but I mean, there's a lot of holes in here that, and concerns, I think, I've heard across the table tonight. So I don't know how we do that, but I, I don't want Rich leaving this room thinking that everything's hunky-dory from our perspective.
Yeah. Do you, um, I don't think we can vote to memorialize him, but Amy could certainly provide him with a, a record of what we talked about, right? And I think that's what we'll have to do. Unless you'd like to take on the task and write up a memorialized document, Mike, and we can all, all sign it at a later meeting, and give it to Rich before the twenty-eighth. If you, if you're up to that task, we want to have to let you. No, I think you understand what we're talking about. I think there's an issue with the traffic study, I think there's an issue with the, obviously, parking issue. Those are two of the big prominent things.
Yeah, and I.
And I think you have to address the stormwater, wastewater head-on before these meetings, so people understand that we are not going that route.
If you don't have the opportunity to attend the meeting on the twenty-eighth, I think I, I don't think I would go in there and represent that this board is hunky-dory by any means. Um, I, I think I, I mean, it's, watch the tape, I mean, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not gonna, you know.
And especially express that we want to have duels in the rear parking lot, when you and the building commissioner don't agree. That will be, that will be the highlight of the evening.
Devin wants arm wrestling, so we may have to vote on that.
I wouldn't want to arm wrestle that.
And, and you have to use black powder.
The zoning commission.
And you have to use black powder guns.
Oh, so he's going to wrestle? Could he wrestle for me?
Huh? Will I wrestle for you?
No, Devin will wrestle for you. He'll, he can stand it for you.
He can have a stand-in, sure.
That would work.
Put it in there. There you go. Alright, thanks, Rich.
Thank you, Rich, appreciate it.
Alright, we had a, um.
Minor modification.
We had a minor modification to thirty-nine Miralake. As you remember, this was the applicant who came in. He didn't have a real good plan, uh, building plan, but we did, using the photos he had, we determined that it appeared as if his deck went two feet to the left of the house, and, um, so we limited him to that would be the maximum amount he could, um, build. In other words, non-conforming a lot, he couldn't go any further. And, uh, in the conditions, we put in that no staircase. Well, he said, you know, I might want to do a staircase, so could I, could I, could you go back and say as long as the staircase wouldn't extend two feet beyond the left side of the house? In other words, not into the setback any greater than pre-existing deck.
So it'd be a twenty-four inch staircase, right?
Exactly, which is not allowed by building code, so he'd have to actually make some other provision, but we have no problem doing it, so that's the, so the motion would be to, a condition of the special permit being granted, that the decks are to be built with the existing footprint of those two original decks, whether or not a staircase is constructed. So could I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Devin?
No.
You understand it?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Don, everybody else has signed, if you could sign that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Um, we have no, we're not going to do the minutes tonight, Amy, because I have a bunch of members who all want to go home after that riveting exhibition and performance by Rich. So, do those at the next meeting, if that's alright with you. And, uh, could I have a motion to close the zoning board of appeals meeting at nine fifty-five PM on the sixteenth?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening. Thank you, Chris.
Amy, I have your originals for the minutes, with the signature page.